Six o'clock and we'll begin the special meeting for the County Board of Commissioners with the flag pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank everybody that's here and welcome. With that, Beth, would you do a roll call?
Sure. Commissioner Benoit.
Here.
Commissioner Heinem.
Here.
Commissioner Pop.
Present.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Here.
Thank you.
County Administrator Monte Hudley.
So, Ms. Chair, the action before you need is to conduct a public hearing on proposed CIP plan and propose to issue capital improvement plan bonds. Jessica Green from Northland Securities is here to present our staff report.
Okay. Jessica, welcome.
Commissioners, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As Monte just mentioned, we are here tonight for the purpose of conducting a public hearing related to a five-year capital improvement plan.
The mic isn't working.
You sure it's on?
I'll try to be a little bit louder here. So, again, the purpose of the meeting tonight is to conduct a public hearing related to the five-year capital improvement plan. For Benton County, this will cover the years 2025 through 2029. The purpose of this plan is to facilitate the financing of a proposed new government center and utilize the authority under capital improvement plan bonds to do so. Sure. So, with that, as the county board is aware, when you are utilizing capital improvement plan bonds, there are certain statutory proceedings that are required prior to the issuance of those bonds. One of those things is the adoption of a five-year capital improvement plan. And more specifically, statute requires that the plan is drafted for at least five years. It can be drafted for more. But, again, this plan is drafted for the years 2025 through 2029. So, the plan has been drafted in accordance with statute. So, we have a bit of an introductory section. And then statute requires that you are reviewing these eight separate areas that statute calls for, for review and comment on. So, this plan, again, has been drafted to comply with that statutory process. If it's okay with the commissioners, what I would plan to do is simply go through this document that's in your packet this evening. I'll plan to keep things rather high level, being that the board has been discussing this project for years. You've had numerous meetings, and I know that you've been holding some open house meetings lately. So, we don't necessarily need to rehash in detail kind of the need for the project, although all of those details are included in the plan here. I simply won't read the plan to you. If at any point you do want to stop and talk about the details in the plan, if I've gone sort of too high level, simply let me know. Does that sound okay?
Correct.
Okay. So, we'll start with the introductory section. This section simply refers to the statutory reference. So, it is Minnesota Statute 373 dot forty. And that speaks to the issuance of general obligation capital improvement plan bonds. Now, when I say capital improvement plan, I'm not referring to the more comprehensive CIP that the county would maintain for all sorts of activities. So, not just, you know, vehicle acquisitions, property acquisitions, all sorts of different projects. This is a specific capital improvement plan related to the issuance of capital improvement plan bonds. And those types of bonds are primarily issued for essential service facilities. So, again, this is very specific to this issuance or proposed issuance of bonds. Also, in the introductory section, what we kind of address right away, right out of the gate, is the authority for the issuance of bonds by the county. So, in terms of capital improvement plan bonds, what is stated in statute is that your maximum principal and interest in any given year for the total amount of capital improvement plans, bonds outstanding cannot exceed point one-two percent of your estimated market value. The estimated market value for Benton County is just under five-and-a-half billion dollars. That results in a capacity for principal and interest of approximately six-and-a-half million. And what you'll see at the end of this report that you've got before you is that all of the scenarios that we've looked at in terms of various terms, which has not been decided at this point, all of those scenarios, maximum principal and interest is well below that threshold. And then the purpose section here speaks to the types of projects that can be financed with capital improvement plan bonds. And then we move on to the capital improvement planning process. So, of course, the board has authorized the preparation of the capital improvement plan. Staff has worked directly with Northland in preparing this plan and providing all of the details related to the need for the project. And then there is some information here related to the voting requirement. So, at least two-thirds, the members of the county board, would need to approve the issuance and approve the plan here. And then also, it speaks to the need for a public hearing. And then following the public hearing, that there is a thirty-day reverse referendum period whereby the county could get a petition against the issuance of bonds. Now, that petition needs to be signed by at least five percent of those that voted in the last general municipal election in terms of number of signatures. If the county were to receive a petition, you would have a couple of options for how you move forward. At that point, if the county wanted to move ahead with the issuance of bonds, you would need to take that question to the residents of Benton County. And you could do that within a general election. If there's time to get that question on the ballot, you could hold a special election, if that's what you would like to do. If you do take it to an election and it comes back that the residents are supportive, you're clear to issue the bonds. If that comes back that the residents do not want the project, you need to sit out a period of a hundred-and-eighty days before you start the project again, assuming that the project is considerably the same. If it's materially different, you could probably start the project, or excuse me, the process, a bit early. But, again, a hundred-and-eighty days if the vote is no. Now, if the, if the county board were to receive a petition against the issuance of bonds and you've decided that you don't want to take it to an election, at that point, you just can stop. That is fine. What that means, though, is that you have a period of three-hundred-and-sixty-five days where you can't propose the project again and again, start this public hearing process again without making substantial changes to the scope of the project. From there, we list out the eight separate areas that I mentioned previously, so ranging from the condition of the current infrastructure, likely demand for the improvement, so on and so forth. From there, we get into the projects to be financed. And, again, this is a five-year plan, but for this plan specifically, we are looking at just the potential construction of a new government center. We have, of course, the years 2025 through 2029. And currently, what we're expecting is that if the board is comfortable moving ahead, that the project would be constructed or starts to be constructed here in 2025. However, you do have the flexibility to start the project at any time during the term of this plan. So, even if now that we have listed in here that you would start in twenty-five, you can start in twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine. The authority lies within those five years that are stated within the plan, even though, again, we're just looking at this one project. The other thing to keep in mind is if the county board identified projects, other projects that would be financed with the issuance of capital improvement plan bonds during the term of twenty-five through twenty-nine, you can go back and amend this plan. You'd simply have to re-notice a hearing and increase the amount of the authority that's being authorized via the plan. So, we'll get into these eight areas. So, related to the condition of the county's infrastructure, including the projected need or for repair or replacement. Very simply put, the county is out of space. You have an older building. You have a number of buildings that have been sort of put together in order to provide service to residents. And a number of people would likely call the sort of footprint and the layout functionally obsolete at this point and requiring substantial renovation to allow for additional service delivery, accommodating of staff, et cetera. However, when renovations have been discussed, there would be some, some reduction in the overall square footage that the county would have just due to the structures that you have currently. And with those facility studies, it has been recommended that the county board consider the construction of a new facility that would allow for accommodating of growth, not only for service delivery, but also for staff needs well into the future. And, again, a good amount of detail here related to the existing structure and the condition. And then from there, we get into the likely demand for the improvement. The county board has made investment in other facilities for the county in the last many years. That being said, the remaining, what is referred to as the county government center, has buildings that range from very well-seasoned, a hundred-and-twenty-four years, down to forty-four years old. And all of the spaces within the government, government center, excuse me, again, are at capacity. So, don't allow for future growth. And, again, moving things around so that it's efficient in providing service to residents. Moving on to the estimated cost of the improvement. So, the projected project amount is approximately twenty-nine point seven million dollars. The county intends to finance the project to the, through the issuance of general obligation capital improvement plan bonds. Now, this estimate is meant to provide you with a ceiling for that authority. So, it doesn't mean that the county is going to issue twenty-nine point seven million dollars. You have not received bids yet, so that information would be reviewed. And then also, the county board has the ability to provide some cash to reduce the borrowing need. But also, it should be known that even if you go through the CIP process, if at any point the county board decides that you're not going to do the project, approving the plan does not require you to issue bonds. So, it can't be used to compel you to issue debt. It is simply providing the authority to issue bonds up to that, again, that maximum amount of twenty-nine point seven million. Available public resources, the county would finance the bond principal and interest payments through a debt service levy. That would be spread on all taxable property within the county. We then move on to the level of overlapping debt in the county. And what we are doing here is just providing a snapshot of the other taxing jurisdictions within the county. So, the schools, the townships, and then also the cities and their level of debt that has impact on tax rates, just to, again, provide a snapshot of the outstanding debt in the area. Relative benefits and costs of alternatives for uses of the funds. The county board, of course, does find that, that a new county government center would produce substantial benefits to residents and county employees. With the new layout of the government center, that building would have a focus on customer service with a number of different services located near the front of the building that are accessed the most. So, DMV and also veteran service offices would be located near the front and be very easily accessible to residents. Operating costs related to the proposed improvements. So, we do have a number of different areas here related to the estimates for operating the new facility. However, they are estimates. At this time, obviously, we wouldn't know the actual costs of those, those operating costs until, of course, the county had fully moved into that building. But there has been some research done in terms of the, the operating costs. And then, again, we do have a note here that speaks to the fact that the county board would be implementing a number of different energy-efficient improvements into the building as much as possible, of course, according to the scope of the project. And then finally, number eight here, looking at alternatives for providing services or looking at shared facilities. There are times when certain cities are able to find co-locating or sharing facilities to be of benefit. In terms of county government, though, co-locating is really not a great option for counties, just because of the level of service that you provide and the ability to do that efficiently with residents within the county. So, if you were to share services with a neighboring county, for example, it would simply mean that travel times, service delivery, et cetera, would be much more inefficient than it is today located here and fully. And then the final piece of this, looking at financing the capital improvement plan. Again, the maximum authority that is requested under the plan is twenty-nine million, seven-hundred thousand dollars, which, again, ties to the current estimate of the bonds, or excuse, the project. Just to repeat myself, that does not mean that the county will issue twenty-nine point seven million dollars. You can issue less than that. That is just your ceiling. And, again, you can abandon this completely. Even if you approve the plan today, it cannot be used to compel the county to issue debt or finance the project. So, the two tests that are applicable to this particular borrowing authority. The county cannot exceed roughly in access, debt in access, excuse me, of three percent of the estimated market value. So, when we look at the estimated market value for the county, again, that being just under five-and-a-half billion dollars, and we multiply that by that three percent test, the total amount of debt outstanding for the county could be up to one-hundred-and-sixty-four million, eighty thousand, eighty thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars. The county currently has no debt that is applicable to that debt authority. So, that leaves the entire authority of a hundred-and-sixty-four thousand, or, excuse me, a hundred-and-sixty-four million, eighty thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars of total debt authority remaining. And then I'll repeat what we went over at the very beginning. So, your principal and interest payments cannot exceed for the, for all capital improvement plan bonds that are outstanding, cannot exceed point one-two percent of your estimated market value. You do not have any capital improvement plan bonds outstanding. And based on the estimated market value, you have approximately up to six million, five-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand, two-hundred-and-ten dollars that are, that is the capacity for the total debt service that you could have with capital improvement plan bonds outstanding. We do provide you with some estimates based on the various terms that we've been looking at. Based on a twenty-five-year term, we would estimate that the payment would be approximately one-point-eight million. If we move that to a fifteen- or twenty-year term, we're looking at somewhere between two-point-one and two-and-a-half million. So, again, well under that capacity of six-and-a-half million. But that is sort of the, the test related to capital improvement plan bonds. And, again, the county has demonstrated that you're well below both of those thresholds. So, that is a lot of information, I understand. From here, I'm happy to take any questions. You can certainly open it up to public comment. You do have a resolution, of course, for consideration this evening, if you choose to move ahead, following, receiving public comment.
I guess first we'll open it up for, if any of the county board has questions for Jessica. Anybody have any questions? Do you feel we want to open her up to public questions or after, during the public hearing or?
I think you can open the public hearing.
Okay. Okay. Thanks, Jessica. The next item on our agenda is the public hearing to consider. It's not the, it's not issuing the bonds, it's the intent to issue bonds. And we'll go through a few things. The intent is to issue, like Jessica said, up to twenty-nine thousand, seven-hundred, twenty-nine million, seven-hundred thousand dollars in bonds. And this is to start the clock for the reverse referendum. So, there'll be thirty days from today if the board chooses to go through with the intent to issue. And that decision will be made later on in this evening. At this time, we'll, before we give the, before we open the public hearing, we've heard from staff. Do we need to hear from anybody else, Monte? Okay. If the applicant is present, or they can please come to the podium, and that is the county, and we've done that, we'll now open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to the county board on this agenda item? If so, please come to the podium and state your name and your address. If the, if the audience is large enough, and I don't think we're that large, that we'll limit it to a certain amount, or if you get carried away. I do ask that you be courteous to the county board members. We've had one meeting that was pretty rough and pretty outrageous with some language that we did not appreciate. We're all here to serve the best interest of the people of the county. So, I, that's one part that I would, I will probably cut you off if you use vulgar language or something like that that goes with it. So, okay. Mr. Hovde.
My name is Jim Hovde. I live in Langola Township. I'm here to speak in opposition to the issuing of bonds. The tax burden is more than we can handle. The tax issues that your good commissioners have already had a handle on was the airports commission, which Ed Pop says is under negotiation. But that, that's not going anywhere. The other three people, other three entities are not going to give up Benton County contribution. Negotiate, I think, all you want, but we're stuck with that. The worst part is they can, mentioned the meeting was not truthful on this issue, but they can raise taxes without representation. The airport commission is one. Many of these good folks are on fixed incomes. The tax burden that this is going to pose is just one more level of, of, of something that's just difficult. I think there are other options that they could go. But of all the people I've talked to in my area, now, one person has been enthusiastic about this at all. And I would be very surprised if any commissioners vote against this. It would be shocked to me. Maybe one. But you guys are going to do this, and we're going to get it whether we like it or not. Thank you.
Jim, one, one deal on the airport, that we are not the only entity that's questioning the airport.
All entities.
All entities. The three counties are all questioning.
Yes.
The, the locality of that. So, we are not standing there alone.
Interesting to see where it goes.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name's Michael Deppa, registered voter in Benton County. I'd like to ask the board how much money was spent on the project already for going forward. How much money do we have? How much money does the county got invested in it? Where are we sitting?
Do you have that figure, Monte, or we got a rough estimate?
Let's not go with the rough estimate. Let's go with what's spent. Everybody knows what's been spent already because you had to write a check.
You let me check, and I'll get back to you during the course of this meeting. I don't want to guess, because when I guess, I'm wrong. How about giving me time to go check, and I'll let you know.
Fair enough.
I've got a couple other questions. Is, is, you know, you get people on a fixed income. You know, we know that there's people that are probably paying up to a thousand dollars a month to live in their home on taxes in the county. I don't think that that's very feasible, because you know that that taxes is just going to continue to rise and going to go up. You know, people on the social security. You know, it come to having a meeting where we sit and now a decision, I believe, has been made already by the board, because you already went forward and mentioned that there was going to be digging into the project in September already from the last meeting, that they possibly, the contractor who's sitting right here, mentioned that they could break ground in September. So, I want to know if that's accurate or not. Is that what the board was going to do, and was, was that the plan?
Ms. Chair, or Commissioner Kapinski.
I think what was stated is they could break ground in September if everything was approved.
If everything.
This has not been approved. It has not been voted on. And we are still sitting here wondering what we're going to do. But this, but tonight starts at referendum time period and allows us to, this is a legal step that we have to do in order to even be a valid, to be a valid job going forward. We have to have some kind of financing for it. So, this, this gives us the avenue to finance it with the bonds. We can flush the bonds at any point during this process and do away with it.
Well, I think that would be a good idea to flush the bonds with it. If you don't have the money that's set into a reserve fund to pay for the project, we're borrowing. How, how are the taxpayers ever going to get ahead? How, how do the taxpayers take, how do they take the hit on that?
When, when Monte comes back, I'd like, there are certain levels that we can only go with, with levying you guys to build this slush fund per year. We can't just keep putting money in, in a savings account for a building like this. There, there's legalities on that.
Okay. You know, we talked about, we talked about, there's got to be a budget set for maintenance every, every year. There's been maintenance every year. There's a budget set by the county, by the commissioners. Where's, where, where have we gone with that, and why hasn't the work been done, where we see it on a video screen of what's just the bad? Not the good. There's a lot of good here. You know, space. You got to realize, you're building a twenty-nine million. That's just an estimate. Twenty-nine million is what they're saying. We know that's not coming in at twenty-nine million. It's going to be over. Go ahead, Ed.
Twenty-nine million, seven-hundred thousand is the maximum amount that we would be able to spend if we move forward tonight with the intent to issue bonds. Not saying we're going to issue. It's with the intent. So, it'll never be more than twenty-nine million dollars.
And never say that again?
It will never be more than twenty-nine million, seven-hundred thousand dollars.
Do we have twenty-nine million, seven-hundred dollars in a fund to spend?
That's the maximum amount that we could bond.
So, we have the money in a bond?
Well, we can get it. We don't have it right now.
So, we don't have the money to, to build a new courthouse?
We have to bond for it.
We have to bond for it, just like a school district bonds to build a new.
Monte, can you, can you please tell the audience what the, what the maximum amount we can levy to build a slush fund or a savings account?
It depends on the purpose. If you talk about what Jessica just talked about, it was six million dollars.
No, I, I think what Mr. Depp is looking at is if we would take and, and levy and build a slush fund to, like a savings account over the next.
There's no limit on that. I mean, there's no legal limit on that.
So, we, we could just, over the time, over ten years, put this money away and build it?
Right.
I thought there was a max that we had to stay with then.
You could levy whatever you chose to, set it aside and pay cash. Right. Yeah.
But, no.
You would be levying each year for that.
You would be.
Of course. Again, there's no legal limit on the levies right now. Right. And just pay cash. Right.
But no matter what, it's still coming from the taxpayers.
Correct. But it's coming from the taxpayers. But if we don't have the money, we shouldn't be doing the project. You know, it's, if, you can't spend, you can't borrow and make money. It's pretty reasonable.
I don't understand that one. I mean.
Okay, if we have, okay, what you're saying, we have to be bonded. Okay, you have to explain to me what the bond is. Explain to me, is the money, does a county have money set aside in bonds to cover the project?
No.
So, no.
So, we are the bond.
Yeah.
The taxpayers are the bond.
So hypothetically, and I, and I'm not trying to be argumental here, but if we took and came to you guys and said, we're going to levy you ten percent for a building in ten years, would you guys agree to that?
Do we need it? Can we cut somewhere else?
I, I can tell you, I, every year that goes by, I'm not getting younger. And I know these buildings aren't. And we, we're out of space.
Your neighbor don't like, like the way your house looks.
So, Ms. Chair, if I could urge you, I think if someone wishes to speak during a public hearing, they should come to the podium, give them their name, address, so we have that for the record.
Okay. So, would you please wait till Mr. Depp is done, and then you can come up?
I still didn't get the question answered, Don.
Okay, can I ask?
Money was spent on the project going forward.
I'll ask your, you had a question first about how much has been invested so far. So, I have a number for you. So, one-point-three million. Nine-hundred-and-ninety, nine-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand is for architectural design. Uh, 996,000 is for architectural design services going back almost two years. 32,900 for like um, soil boring, soil testing and so on. And then the county purchased the land across the street about two years ago in May and that was 277,000. So, all told, about 1.3 million has been invested so far.
Okay, I, with that, with that number, don't you think it would have been a lot wiser for the board to take that 1.3 million dollars and stick it into our building? 1.3 million dollars we did on a project. Okay, so tonight I, tonight I understand, you know, that, you know, there's two options. Is that, is that correct? Is that what you guys are coming up with is two options? Either go forward with the project or to have a vote on the project?
No, that's incorrect.
Okay, so.
Our decision tonight is whether or not we're going to approve funding, potential funding to bond. Nothing to do with, yes, we're going to do the building or we're not. As Commissioner Kapinski said, if the board chose tonight to establish the funding parameters of a bond, then that would start the process for a reverse referendum for 30 days. If the voters decide to do that and provide that, the project is done. That's the voters' opportunity here. If you fast forward to May 29th, that's the day that we're scheduled to open the bids. That's when we're going to know, are we close to the 29.7 or not? Are we going to be over or under? If we're over, we don't have approval to spend more than that because we're only going to approve 29.7. If we're under, we've got a decision to make. But there's a couple of things in play here because if we have a reverse referendum, there's not going to be a decision to make because the public has spoken and said, you're not going to do it.
Yeah, and I, I believe that there's more than the two options that are on the table. The third option is just to scrap it. I think you've got too much, I think you've got, we got, we got, we don't, where are we going to come up with putting people at a tax burden going up? I mentioned at the last meeting, I had a parcel of land that went up 76%. 76% that parcel of land went up. So, I go to the assessor's office and I ask if I could build on that parcel of land. And they didn't know, so I went to planning and zoning. Planning and zoning mentioned to me that I would have to fill out a um, paperwork so that they'd have a meeting to get a variance. So, neither one of them knew if I could even build on that property line, but my taxes went up 76%. I guess, I don't get that. I, I, I don't understand how you can make a decision to raise somebody's taxes when I'm not given the opportunity to make a decision on my own other than to dish money out of my pocket to the county. So, um, I just, uh, I'm just, uh, I'm appalled by the decision that it's got this far. My uh, my comment is, is that, you know, I believe there's three options. I think it needs to stop and just do away with it. I'd like to say thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mike.
Hi, I'm Mary Kay Nordman, 9511, 25th Street, Northeast Sauk Rapids. I think this is absolutely ridiculous that we've spent 1.3 million dollars on a project. Those are my tax dollars and these people's tax dollars. And when I go to the courthouse and I use the facilities, I have no complaints whatsoever. I, I feel like I walk in, I get the service I need. I don't hear people complaining about the courthouse, um, using the facilities. Um, I understand there are things that need to be fixed, but you guys are going to give yourselves a budget of 29 million dollars, 0.7, whatever it is. How about going, hey, maybe we've spent 1.3. How much realistically can we spend on this courthouse that isn't going to tax the community that we live in? It's ridiculous. My taxes are 9,200 dollars a, a year and you're going to get me right out of Benton County. It's ridiculous. My neighbors, my friends, people that live in Benton County are like, please go to the meeting, find out. And if they have to do the ballot or to sign something, they're all going to sign it. It's like a waste of money. It's our money that you're wasting. It's my tax dollars and I'm upset about it.
Mr. Kapinski. I, I, I hear you. And, and believe me, if, if you guys do the reverse referendum, I'm 100% for it.
And is it going to start up in a year after that or two years after that?
It'll go, it'll go to the taxpayers. We've already said that. It'll, it'll go on the ballot. It takes all of us.
Why wasn't it done this way in the first place? Instead, we spent 1.3 million dollars. Why didn't, hey, we're thinking about doing this before we spend a million dollars. Take it to the tax, to the people that are paying the taxes and say, hey, this is our idea. Let's throw it on the ballot.
Ma'am, ma'am, if I could address that, because um, about asking that, we've had meetings, committee, the whole meetings. We've had meetings constantly about this. This is not something new.
I understand.
We've met for a year and a half, and please let me finish.
Okay.
Nobody, I, I shouldn't say nobody, very, very, very few people out of the 42,000 people we have in this county showed up at those meetings to help direct that decision. And that's all of our.
Now, I guarantee you.
I understand that, but for a year and a half, there's been public notices, meetings held multiple, multiple, multiple times. And we've been as absolutely transparent as we can be about this project since the day we started it. So, this is not something new.
So, knowing it now, why are we continuing? Why, do you feel like?
How would we have gotten to this point though without the meetings?
Well, I think that there's a lot of people that have been upset for more than just the last three months that this has been going on. I mean, it's, it's constant with taxes in Benton County. It's, it's truly, I mean, I moved here, I lived in Benton County, then I was in Morrison County, then I came back to Benton County and I live on a gravel road, less than 10 acres. I don't know what, what's going to happen when I'm a retired, okay, I worked at a facility, the correctional facility for 27 years. It's an old building and you know what you do? You, you fix it up. With that 1.3 that they've already spent, I'm sure there's a lot of repairs that could have been done. And when it comes to you building the Taj Mahal over here, let's do this. How about go, let's have a realistic plan. We don't need that in Foley, really. I mean, can't we build a nice 2 million, 3 million dollar project? And instead, we're going to take it right to the top because this is how much money we can get for bonding, so let's spend it all. That's not what the people want to do here. That's how I've been told from other people that they feel the same way as I do. So, let's not build the Taj Mahal, guys. We don't need a drive-through. We don't need all this stuff. Just make it practical. If the veterans are having a hard time, as she said, it's for the veterans and people with disabilities, can't get through the door, whatever it is. Let's make it realistic. Let's not go bells and whistles.
May, thank you.
I'm Jim Gotwalt, live in Langola Township. As my commissioner. You know, I'm not against building. That's not why I'm talking. I'm against, I look at what these farmers do for a million bucks. They build a chicken barn that's 650 feet long, 60 feet wide for a million bucks. If you need office space, I could brick it, do a lot of work to that building, put windows in it, whatever you guys want for a hell of a lot less than 27.9. I know you had meetings before, but it looks like it's a horse behind the cart.
Why didn't you call a special meeting like you said you have?
Jim, you must have turned off the mic.
I did not come and that's my own business, but whatever. I had a hard time getting here. I know a lot of farmers wanted to be here today. I think this meeting should have been two months ago. I was a job soup for a lot of, for Winkelman Construction and a few other contractors. 27.9 is one hell of a lot of money that you're putting on these people. My taxes went up, my son's taxes went up, 1 to 2,000 bucks a year. Insurance went up 1,000 bucks a year. Car insurance went up 1,000 bucks a year. I'm not saying you don't need meeting. You've got a hell of a parking spot here that could put a one-level building in here. We don't need an elevator. We need hallways to get to the office rooms. Elevators are expensive. Like this young lady said, we don't need a big brick front and, and something like that. These architects like to draw that, but they don't have to pay for it. We do. I've been through it and to say that it's only going to be 27, 29.7 is a joke. I've never did a building job souping where it stayed at that number. There's always alternatives and you people better understand that. And I don't think any one of you could go to your constituents in your precinct and get 100% vote for this. You'd be lucky if you get 10. Sauk Rapids got a big referendum with the school district. We got the federal government cutting budgets, trying to save us from 37 trillion in debt. The state of Minnesota is probably, they spent 18 billion, 10 billion in debt now. Where in the hell do you think these people are going to come up with money? It's pretty hard to just go to the ditch and pick up garbage and find some. There's a lot of farmers wanted to come tonight. They're planting corn. One, two months ago, they would have been here. This room would have been packed. The parking lot would be full. I'm not against office space, but I'm against 27, 29.7. And I think most of these people, if they raise their hand, who's for this at 27? You're for it? For the whole 27.9? You're one of about 50. There you go. Not very big percentage, is it? But I think you better look at it. Maybe we better have a special outside audit to this county. I lived in this county my whole life. I think we should probably have an outside audit of what's going on with our money. I look at social service. I look at bridge funds. Social service is eating our butts away. 4 million, probably 3 million more than what road and bridge. Then you come up with a sales tax, which is good, but then there's a sign there that costs 8,000 dollars put by sales tax. That burns my butt.
Really?
That burns me up.
I'm sorry about that, Jim, but I was part of that decision because.
Well, I, I think it's crazy because that sign don't cost 10 cents.
Well, we reuse, we do reuse them, eh?
I can go back in this county. I lived here my whole life and it's great you're doing it because some other people are helping us pay it.
Right.
But why, my dad was on this board, your board, years and years ago. These roads were built by people and now we can't even keep them up. And we want to put a 30 million dollar building up? I don't, I don't get it. Because everybody's taxes, like that young lady said, she'll get a thousand bucks increase. I will. How many won't get a thousand bucks or 500? 500 is a lot of money. And Minnesota's broke and we're broke. Every time I see a budget like this come through, there's a bond issue almost paid off. Let's hit them again. Let's hit them again. It's almost paid off. The jail's almost paid off and it's sitting empty.
Jail is paid off.
I see, yeah. But we got what? Not, probably not even 20 prisoners. I could go get you that many right now to fill it up. I mean, it's easy up here to sit and spend my money in these people's money.
It's our money too, sir.
Well, that's true.
And you know what? We didn't have anything to do with the, the school district bonds.
No, but it hurts these people.
I get that, but we are 1.6 million dollars in debt in the county. 1.6 million dollars total in debt in the county.
Yeah.
It, you know, and, and I look at the Sauk Rapids, 60 some million dollars and what have they got, 15% of the, of the population in Sauk Rapids or in, in Benton County? We're doing a building for 29 million. That's going to take care of 42,000 people.
I've, I've job souped a lot bigger buildings than this one for less money. I have. I'm not, you can shake your head all you want at me. I don't like paying excess taxes.
I don't either, but we, we can't just sit here and not do anything.
No.
Our codes are driving other things, so if we put, if we put, if we don't do money here, we have to do money in this building.
What's your interest rates on the bonds? Is this a good time to buy bonds?
That would be a Jessica deal.
What's the interest rate? How much? It's not bad, but you've got a lot of one-level area here.
So, we also looked at that, sir, and that was going to cost us 23 million dollars to throw another one-level and remodel everything in here and then we could not use the old courthouse. So, we've, we've looked at this already.
Well, I don't know, maybe other people like spending money, but I don't. I mean, I don't mind spending county money here because it's, if you need the space, but like this young lady said, 1.3 million, I mean, 1, 1.3 million that you already spent would have did a lot of work.
You're right. It would have taken off of 23 million. So, we would have been at 20, 21, 5 million.
I mean, yeah.
You know, I mean, we've looked at these options, okay, so.
I've known you my whole life. I, I just can't believe the county's spending that much on this.
We, we haven't decided to spend the money yet, okay? That won't come for another month.
I feel it's a little late for this meeting.
Thanks, Jim.
Unfortunately, there's a process we have to go through to get to this point.
Anybody else? Yep, step to the podium.
Hi, my name is Karen Campa and I live in St. George Township. So, I got a bunch of questions. This young lady mentioned, well, first of all, let's back, I got to back this up, okay? So, you guys went ahead and you were moving forward with this. You guys spent the money, bought the land and you said people didn't come, but you just kept moving forward and forward. And you didn't propose a vote when you were moving forward with this. And all of a sudden, people got wind of it, what you did last month or the month before and thought, oh, they're, they're moving forward with this. So, somebody stepped up to the plate and said, well, we gotta, we gotta stop this. We have to do a revision. And I think personally that you wouldn't be at this revision state if, when you guys were planning this and moving forward and voting for it amongst yourselves, um, that you would have had something and reached out or sent a flyer in the mail or something with our property tax along with that and said, we are going to have a vote coming up because we're moving forward. So, a lot of us were blindsided. This lady here mentioned that um, this revision, 30 days from tonight, they get the petition going or whatever and then after 180 days, that's kind of a dead. Then you guys got to start over and then we have to come back to the table and we have to do the revision again and we have to get the petitions going again. How often can we do that? How often does the public get to do that? How many times after 180 days does the county, the people in the county have to come to you? That's one of my concerns. Another one is, um, I'm disabled and I'm on a fixed income. And like this gentleman said, I'm going to be out of my house next year. I have school levies I'm paying on. I'm on a fixed income. What my taxes will go up next year, I don't even get in a month. And I'll be shoved out of my home and probably moving in with my 93-year-old or 94-year-old mother because I won't be able to live in my house. I have, St. George has levies that I'm paying on. There's two at the school board and if this comes up, I didn't ask to get disabled. I worked full-time and was in a car accident and I couldn't go back to work. So, this is where I'm at. I go without medicine, sometimes without food because I have to scramble to get my money to pay my bills or my taxes or whatever. The second thing that I wanted to say is, I don't know how many of you commissioners were on the board when this place was renovated years ago. If you're all new or if you were still on it, I know people that worked here. I know that when they moved the DMV in with the tax department, there was one lady, the head lady in that department and a couple of other ladies and one lady had to take out, doing the taxes and the DMV. Now, you've got several people in there. And you, you aren't that busy like Stearns County is. I, I hear you want to do a drive-up and you're talking about how old your building is. Little Falls has an old building. They don't have a drive-up and I know the lady that runs that and they're a lot busier than what they are in here. than what they are in here. I wanna just say about, I know people that have businesses in town, and the customer service that they have received in that area has been really poor, and they go to Malacca to pay for their tabs or pay, do transfers or whatever. I'm gonna give you an instance. I was in the county back in October to renew my license, and of course, I have a bit, brain injury, so I wasn't up on that by May seventh, you had to have this new license. So I took a number, and I sat there, and I waited, and I waited, and they weren't busy. And then finally, somebody came up to help. In the meantime, an older gentleman was at the tax side, and he was dinging on the bell, and nobody got up to help him. So I sat there and I observed everything that was going on, and I thought, man, this isn't ran like it used to be. So if any of you are here, I'm sorry if I offend you, if you work in that department. So I asked this gal that came to help me about this license business, and she goes, she said, there's, you have to have a birth certificate, you have to have this, you have to have that, and I said, just to renew my license? Yeah, by May seventh, you have to have this new license. Oh, I thought. Well, I said, I don't have a birth certificate. My house was broken into. They stole my safe and everything in it. Well, then you go across the hall, and she says, and you gotta purchase one. I go across the hall over there, and the lady says to me, well, she says, you don't have to buy that license. You can get a regular license, and you don't need a birth certificate. And I said, what? She goes, you only need that new license if you're gonna fly, or you're gonna go out of the country. So she said, you don't have to purchase. And she said, you'd have to bring a piece of mail with your residence on. I said, oh, I got something in my purse that I could show. So I go back there, and I asked the lady to help me. She goes, no, you gotta take a number. Wait your turn now. I sat in there almost two hours. Then guess what happened? Another guy came, an older fella, and a young guy to change his tabs, and it's getting later and later, and I'm waiting and I'm waiting. One of the ladies went to the bathroom, another lady goes and fills her water bottle, and the guy goes, well, are they gonna wait on us or not? And I said, this happened, I says, when I came to pay my taxes. I said, I dunged the thing in May, and I asked about paying my taxes, and nobody got up, and they said... I said, does somebody want my money here? And they all look over their little cubicles. So getting back to this license thing, it was ten to four, and us three were sitting there, and the lady's sitting there taking her time on her computer, and all of a sudden she leans over and she said, what do you guys need? I said, I'm still waiting. It's been two hours. I said, I'm still waiting. And she goes, well, I'm getting ready to close. And I said, and the older fellow said, but you got ten minutes. It's not four o'clock yet. She goes, I'm not ta, and she goes, what do you need? The guy needed something about his property tax. The other guy, we needed his license tabs renewed, and I needed that new license, driver's license. And she says, you all have to come back tomorrow.
Oh, boy.
And I said, no, you got ten minutes. And guess what? She said, I'm not waiting on any of you. So guess what? I went to Saint Cloud the next day, went to Stearns County. My mother lives in Saint Cloud, and I had to go see her. So I went out to Stearns County, took a number. I didn't even sit down yet, and they called me. And I explained that to her, and she says, no, you don't need for your regular license. I know people that have businesses here in town, and they, the, the poor service in that department, and guess what? They go to Malacca. So this drive-through business that you're proposing, because Stearns County has it, and you want this fancy building because you want that, which lady is gonna get off of, off of her butt and is gonna sit by a window? Or are they gonna say, I got the last one. Are you gonna get up and take care of her? Because I was in there yesterday, and that's what I heard. I got up, I helped her. I'm, I helped, I got the last one. So are they gonna hire somebody to be by the window all the time? I'm telling you, this was run years ago because I knew the people that worked in that department. You had less people working, and there was more people living in the county than there is now. You have forced people out of this county because they can't afford to live here anymore. And the majority of these people, like that gentleman said, are farmers or they're low-income people, and you're gonna put us right out of our homes. I worked my whole life to have what I have, and I, I'm not gonna be able to afford to live there. But my, my, my point is, if you guys were moving forward with this, and all of a sudden, somebody caught ya right in the nick of the time, because you should have had a, proposed a vote before you took that vote amongst yourselves and left the people know that this is what you are for sure moving forward with this. Apparently, you did, because you said you've been working on it a year, two years, spent our money. That's why our taxes went up, I'm sure. And, but, they caught you with this revision now, and there's a lot of concerned people, not just us low-income people, but you've got people that own a lot of acreage, a lot of farms, and how are they gonna afford that? They're gonna sell off their land, and then all some people are gonna come to Benton County? There's people that wanted to move out here a long time ago, and they said, oh, we can't. Nope, you gotta pay way high taxes. You pay one of the highest taxes. I'm on the Sherburne County line. My mailbox is on the Sherburne line, and those people pay a third of their taxes than I do. They are brand-new homes. My home is thirty-seven years old because they don't have that in Sherburne County. They aren't paying for this and this and this and this and this all the time. You suggested that we are, I don't know how much money in debt already.
One-point-six-million.
So why would you wanna add more debt onto that again?
It's either add debt or start fixing this, and we're, we're being forced to by code. It's all...
So what happened to the renovation that was done years ago? You guys put in new office buildings, new carpet, new ventilation system?
I wasn't here.
Okay, you guys weren't there then.
None of them.
So what, what's wrong with all that now that has to be redone? You've got people working in human, in, uh, human services department, and the majority of them, people are working from home. They pop in once in a while, so they're not overloaded with office space over there. Because I was in there to talk to a lady, and I said, well, she said she's here every day. Oh, no, she's a floater. Nope, nope. She works from home. The majority of them work from home. They come and check their messages, or we transfer them to their home phones. So where is this extra space that you guys are talking about that you need? I've been coming in here for years. I didn't walk for a year after my car accident, so I was in a wheelchair, could come right through the front door. I could go to the Cessar's office. I could go to DMV. I could pay my taxes. Where is this, all this? Is it because you wanna make the, this look nicer? Because your, your court system looks nice now, your jail looks nice, and now you think you need this, this complete overhaul of your building? You guys meet on your meetings, I'm sure in here during the week, you have your talks or whatever. I don't know if each of you have your own offices or whatever.
No.
Um, I have no idea.
No.
But these people, some of these people have been working in them offices for years, and they never complained.
Oh.
Uh, maybe now, because they want new. Everybody wants new. I would like a new house. Well, it ain't gonna happen. I'd like a new car. It isn't gonna happen. It's not in my budget. So my question is to you, we have, you said forty-some-thousand people, and this is how many people showed up for this. I don't know, like you say, if you're live-streaming it or whatever, and people chose to stay home or have kids that they gotta take care of, or kids are in sports or whatever, couldn't be here tonight. But I didn't take your tour of the rest of your building. And maybe that's my fault, but I see the extra people you got working in certain departments, and I see what they did years ago, and how many people you had hired in them departments, and you got less people living in this county.
No, we got more people.
From ten years ago, we were up from thirty-six thousand to forty-two thousand.
Because people were telling me that there's a lot of people that have moved out of this town. I have a friend right now that he moved over. He moved into Morrison County, bought a piece of land because the taxes were so high. He's right on the border. He says, I pay less than half in Morrison County than I had. He says, they, it was costing me so much money, and he's got a business. And he said, I, I couldn't, my family couldn't afford it.
So ma'am, from, from your tax point of tax rate and that, when I came on the board ten years ago, Stern, or Benton County was the sixth or seventh highest tax county in the state of Minnesota. We worked very hard to create Benton Economic Partnership, grab some new businesses to the county, and promote things in Benton County. We are now the twenty-seventh or twenty-eighth highest tax county in the state. We have, we have vastly improved that. Sherburne County, you refer to Sherburne County? They used to be way above us. They've spent, I don't know, sixty-three million on a new government center and sixty-three million to remodel their old government center. And now they have come down to forty. They used to be in the sixties, sixty-five, seventy. They are coming to us, and we're trying to get to them.
So then what happens to this building, then?
This building? I will, I will not lie to you. This building is gonna create some tax, we're gonna slide in our tax rating in the state. There's no doubt about it.
I think she's talking about this building.
Yeah, so if you build the other one where you bought the land, then, and everybody moves their offices, and everybody probably gets their own office that they don't have to share like they have been, that's probably what's in the, in the works.
No, that's incorrect.
So what's gonna happen to this building?
So the new building's gonna be all cubicles too. It's not gonna be private offices. I just wanted to clarify that because they're not private offices.
Yet they have a hard time living in their little cubicle now in, in where they are now.
Yep. Mr. Chair?
Go ahead. Um, excuse me. There, I, I'm gonna make some comments, and I'm very new on the board. Two months, I haven't made my mind up on, on what this is going for, but I will say this to everybody in this room. Since I've been here in January, the boiler system in this building has gone down twice in the winter months, which creates no heat, no anything for anybody in this building. If you took the time to take the tour, you would see that our IT department, if we have any problems in that IT department because it is not secure and it goes down, there is a possible of lost information for anybody that's in that system. There's just so many things. What's the right thing? What's not the right thing? I'm a taxpayer in this county too. Do I want my taxes to go up? Absolutely not. But what's the right decision? And as some of these other commissioners have said on the board, we have, I, I feel that you guys have been, prior to me, been, been the most transparent. Public meetings would not have had to be, were not demanded. It was not statutory to have them to do that, but we decided that it was in the best interest of our constituents to do tours of the building so they could see what we were physically looking at. If we start a remodel on this building, that means we have to bring everything up to code. Everything has to be up to code. So what scares me about that is that I've, we've done remodels personally, and you start digging into walls, you start removing walls, what are we gonna find in those walls that's gonna create that to go even higher? So the purpose of these meetings was to get feedback from our constituents so that we could take that. We don't have all the answers. Never do we have all the answers. We do the best that we can to make the best decisions for the people in this county.
Yeah, but you went ahead, is what I'm saying, is you went ahead. We, you said, we, we, you guys went ahead and made that decision for the people. You said, the best interest of the people. Now you're hearing what's in the best interest of the people. Like I said, the tax, taxes came out last April. You guys went and bought land. The taxes came out. Your tax statement came out again. Why wasn't there something in there? Instead of you guys moving ahead, and you should have said, hey, you're the people. You're the ones we're getting the money from. We need you guys to see how you feel about it, and we're gonna take a vote. But you guys, but you guys voted on it, and now somebody caught on, and now they gotta quick get a revision put in there.
Well, first of all, it's a reverse referendum.
Whatever.
Okay? And some of this was started long before I even got on the board, and...
Commissioners have been talking about this before any of us got on the board. This has been going back for ten, fifteen years. They've been talking about upgrading these buildings.
Well, I'm gonna tell you, I don't have the Benton County news. I just found some of this out recently, within the last few months, because of things that people were putting on Facebook. I have health issues. I had five surgeries last year, and so when all this stuff started coming around and people were talking about it, so if I'm one of the stupid people that don't come to your meetings or don't go to the city council meetings to find out what's going on, then what about the rest of them? What about people in here that don't have internet, don't have cellphones to find out what's going on, or they don't come to your meetings? I didn't come to your meetings because I was sickly. So I find us out in a short while, and then all of a sudden, the next thing I know is, oh, my gosh, they gotta do a revision. And it's like, oh, my God, what did they vote on? And then I hear all these different stories, and it's like, I have to go to the next meeting because I have to find out what actually is taking place.
And just so you know, nothing's been decided. Nothing, nothing has been decided.
If they didn't do this revision, okay, let me...
What revision?
Reverse referendum.
This revert, I call it a revision, okay? If they didn't do this, and somebody caught it, and you got thirty days, and somebody didn't go forward, and somebody didn't drop the paper, legal paper, to give to you guys, and thirty days passed, what would happen?
Then it would come to this board as a vote to decide what, what was gonna happen.
Because the, the people, who are your constituents, wouldn't have a vote, and you guys, it would come to the table, and they'd say, okay, they didn't do a reverse referendum. So then you guys would go ahead, and then five people make that decision for forty-two-thousand people. Is that fair?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's, that's fair.
Is it? You guys work for us.
Right, and that...
So is that right for you to go ahead and make that decision?
And ma'am, that's, I mean, I, I, I went filed for the board because I wanted to make a difference. I thought our taxes were too high. We didn't have enough economic development in the county. We needed better roads because our roads were right near probably the bottom of the line, and we've accomplished some of those things. Do I think this process was the right way to go? I don't know yet. There could, maybe there could have been a different way. I think, I mean, if you were watching board meeting, board meetings, I thought a couple months ago, I wanted to put it on hold for the time being, but we're into this now, and we done, the process that we, were put before us was the way we had to go. And now we're to the point where we're gonna have, or the public hearing today, it'll go out for the, and we'll, we'll talk about this tonight when we're done hearing from the public on which way we wanna go, and that'll be a decision whether the, the constituents have to do a reverse referendum or not.
That's just on the issuance.
Just on the issuance.
That's all.
The intent to issue, not, not, we're going to issue.
Well, you've, the, what I've heard, you have all your permits and everything already to go.
We have nothing.
Nothing.
I just came from the city council meeting, and they said that all your, because I questioned them, and all the permits and everything are set to go because...
Maybe we should have...
And I said, well, how come you are involved in it? They said, because it's on our, our, our city land, so that's why we're involved with the government.
With great respect to Ms. Campa, I think it'd be appropriate to allow other...
Yeah.
Oh, well, I'm sorry that I'm taking up my time, and I'm a taxpayer. I'm sorry I took up your time. I just wanna know one more question. I've been paying on my tabs an extra twenty dollars every year for the last how many years, and that money was supposed to be for roads.
It is.
And you guys continue to do that?
Yep.
I know Little Falls did it for years, because I have a friend that works in their government office, and she said, once the roads were done, she said that went away. We haven't had that for years.
They still got a, a tab tax up there.
Uh, not the extra twenty dollars that you guys charge.
There, I think they're, believe they're at ten.
Uh, the last time I talked to her, they didn't have that, so, and she has that...
Maybe not a city one, but they do have a county one.
So, thank you for your time.
Wait, could we let somebody else speak that hasn't spoken yet?
Good evening. Mike Levendowski, Alberta Township. I'm just gonna echo what a bunch of people have already said, but one thing new, you talked about meetings and the public here, not the public here, but the public meetings that were in Rice and Sauk Rapids and Foley. And I went to those meetings and, which is demonstrated like here tonight, we all know what the public sentiment is. But I suppose it's open to interpretation. And so, the public sentiment that you're gonna interpret at those meetings, I guess it's gonna be up to you. I think the true way to determine the public sentiment would be a vote. And I understand that's, you know, your prerogative to do what you gotta do. But these public meetings were meant to be informative and to get feedback. So, the feedback was obvious because ninety-five, ninety percent roughly don't want it. I think the biggest reason for the meetings was to be informative, to say, here's our three D picture of what's gonna happen, here's how much we're gonna spend. So, in that regard, it was very good. It was very informative of what we're up against as taxpayers. But as far as public feedback, I'm not so sure on that. The other part about the meetings that you mentioned that you held prior to this, I know, was there a committee for the building just amongst the board? No building committee per se?
No.
Okay. Wondering, maybe it's too late for this now, obviously looking back, would it have been an option to have members of the board, one or two or how many, have meetings with people in the public? People that do construction projects, people that are farmers, and to get their ideas? And maybe there would have been some type of consensus, yeah, maybe this is another, maybe this is another option. Maybe we can do it for less than twenty-nine million, seven-hundred thousand dollars. So I don't know, none of those meetings happened where you got people from the public to come in and give suggestions or ideas?
Well, just to be clear, Mike, all of our committee of the whole meetings, those are all public. Their, public is always welcome to come to those.
And those were discussing the building itself?
Absolutely.
Okay. And so, prior to these three meetings at various cities?
No, we had multiple.
Multiple, multiple, multiple committee of the, we call them committee of the holes.
Committee of the hole?
And they're all published.
And the minutes for them are online.
Okay. And so, when you have those meetings, are they, are there notice?
Yes.
It's gonna happen? And publishing the papers that you use?
So, if I may, they're posted on our website, they're posted on the bulletin board. We send those out to the media. We don't publish the notices in the paper. We're not required to.
And so, when you have these published, you have, it says meeting of a, of a whole?
Committee of the hole.
Committee of the hole.
And does it say what the meeting's gonna be about?
Yes, like for instance, at the end of our regular board meetings, one of the agenda items we do is set our committee of the holes. Those are listed in our board minutes.
And at that time, the public could get up and speak and give suggestions?
Committee of the holes, and that, I would say, would be up to the board chair?
Right.
But typically, they would allow the public to speak.
Okay.
We've had, we've had people come in, Mike, on roads, and they'll sit there and most of, you know, it's up to the chair and most of the chairs have automatically let them talk, you know.
Because some of these people here tonight have great ideas, you know?
I agree.
And maybe, maybe it's some on them, some of their responsibility, should have been a little more involved earlier in the process. But anyway, we're past that stage of the game. I just wanna say, I lived in the county here most of my life, my family has. And personally, when I go into the court facility here at the courthouse, I guess we're dealing with this building more than anything. I've gotten good service. I don't use every department. I don't know if there's a way that the board gets information about complaints or customer issues. Jessica mentioned that one of the major benefits of doing the bond situation here is, one of the benefits is customer service and service delivery. Do you routinely get calls at home saying, I got shitty service?
Yes.
You do? What, that would have been good to know because we don't hear that, we don't see that. Like Ms. Burnman said, she goes in, she's satisfied. So ultimately, when people get this put in front of them, they think, well, you know, I didn't have such a bad deal when I went into the courts.
One of the things, just to be clear, is you're dealing with an elected official in the sheriff. So let's say that there's a problem at the jail. The sheriff is responsible for that. He's the elected official.
Right.
Same way with the county auditor treasurer. She's, she or that person's an elected physician. They're not accountable directly to the county board. They're an elected official. Same way with the county attorney.
I'm not following you. So, when they have a problem, when they have a problem, that a customer complaint, they don't have to...
Let's say, let's say there's a customer complaint with the county attorney's office. It goes to the county attorney. The county attorney is the elected official. They run their offices how they see fit. And I'm not saying they're good, bad, or ugly. I'm just explaining that if there's a problem in the sheriff's department, it's sheriff's tax issue.
You guys have no ideas about the issues that may come up, like let's say something human...
See, they hear about them. We have no authority in their offices because they're elected officials.
The only authority we have is set their wages.
And their budget.
And their budget. I'll use an example and I'm Christine, I'm sorry, but I had somebody that called and had an issue in the license department and he was irate. And I turned around and called Christine and she knew about it and she tried to help that individual out. And he was pretty much saying some of the same things that Mrs. Tampa said.
Okay. So just since that's, I guess we're trying to explain in that situation is that those particular elected officials are responsible for their part of that office.
Right. But if somebody can't get up, like let's say they can't access, 'cause I took the tours as well and some areas are, you know, I could do just fine and I think probably the majority of the residents in the county can. But if there's an issue with access, wouldn't that be brought to you or building maintenance or somebody that says, hey, we gotta...
Sure.
You get those kinda complaints?
Oh, absolutely.
How many of those kinda complaints where people can't access a part of the building do you get?
Well, I can't say I logged it, but...
There's been a few people on the tours that couldn't do it.
People that were on tours couldn't do it? Yeah.
But, excuse me, but how many of those people are going and using other facilities?
Mitch here. Again, this is, this is Mr. Levendowski's time. I think he should be allowed the floor and then people can come up individually and speak.
Okay. I'm pretty much done. I would just say, you know, it's probably beyond the point, but I would, I know you've said if a referendum is, a reverse referendum is done, that you wouldn't spend the forty thousand dollars roughly to do it?
Well, I'm only one.
On an individual vote? Pardon me?
I'm only one vote, but I will not, I will not vote for it.
Thank God you're in my district.
For what? For a reverse referendum before the twenty-sixth election.
I thought someone else mentioned it here too.
No, I would not, from my standpoint, if the reverse referendum happens and is validated, I'm done until the twenty-sixth election.
Okay.
It'll go on the ballot and let the people...
Just for clarification, Mike, you're referencing if the reverse referendum happens, we wouldn't call a special election. That's what you're referencing.
That's what my question was.
We wouldn't spend another fifty thousand on that.
Okay, that's good to hear.
Then at that point, it would go to the twenty-sixth ballot more than likely.
And I understand by delaying it and if it does pass, yes, it might be additional cost because of the delay.
Well, and a, and a good point, and I'm glad you brought that up, is I think it's very important that we all understand that. That if the reverse referendum does happen and it's validated and the board chooses to, okay, we're done. We're gonna bring it to the twenty-sixth ballot and the countywide taxpayers approve it, they're looking at probably an additional two to three million dollars. Just from historical inflation.
And you know who's gonna get in trouble on that one? Us again. Because we should have done it back then to save the money. You know, we're in a, we're a no-win situation here. If we, if we do it now, we get, we get taken to the cleaners here. And if we, if we wait and we didn't, we didn't hear from forty-some thousand other people at the meetings and they say, you guys should have went, there was only, there was only two hundred people at these meetings. You guys should have did it then. Now, you just cost us three million dollars. But in the meantime, we are going to have to spend money on this building to bring some things up to code.
And people understand that.
Okay.
People, but that's a far cry from twenty-nine point seven million dollars.
Yep.
Bringing things up to code, if you have to tap in or make a remodel, yeah, people understand that 'cause people have done remodeling themselves and they know what they're up against with going, you know, when it comes to code. And if you have to do it, yes. But there's other options, you know, the... The renovation and the expansion of other buildings, I don't, I don't know if that was necessarily brought forth as, as detailed as what this plan is. And that would have been nice as well to see, you know, where the renovation dollars are gonna go. If we put up an addition, where, where's that plan? You know, that would have been nice to see, to compare it to this so people could get a fair idea. Did we ever get that? I don't remember seeing that.
We, we got it in our, in our meetings again. I mean, it was presented to the board when the board tried to make a decision.
It had been at those previous meetings.
When a board tried to make a decision, are we gonna spend dollars on remodeling at plus or minus twenty-three million? Or are we gonna go towards a new one? Those discussions have been ongoing for well over a year.
Was it perhaps a blueprint, nothing, not since that advanced as far as...
Nothing has advanced as what we have.
Nothing is advanced as the new building.
Okay. All right. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mike.
Tough deal. Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience that hasn't spoken and wishes to speak?
Nick Schumacher, seven-five-one-zero, Ninety-Fifth Avenue, Northeast Foley. I just think the government as a whole has just gone crazy in the last umpteen years. I'm sure everybody sitting in this room would agree. How do we reel back to the grassroots? The problem with like all these codes and stuff, we deal with handicap people every day and we're happy to help these people. I myself, if I drive by and I see someone in a wheelchair, I'll be the first one to get out and ask, hey, sir, or ma'am, do you need some help? Let me help you get in there. Do you need help picking this up? Do you need help loading that up? What happened to the common courtesy? I don't see any room in this building, if there's a will, if there's a way you're gonna get in there. I mean, they don't have to go to the boiler room, they don't have to go here or there. They, they could get to their main necessities, right? Or can we maybe shuffle some things around? Maybe if the handy, or the social services, maybe put them on the lower level and move some other stuff around to, to make it more feasible for everybody. And all these codes that keep changing, isn't a lot of these lobbyists, which are tied with other construction companies and just pushing to change all the stuff just to have to spend money? 'Cause what happened, what were these codes years ago?
Yeah. And we're no experts up here to...
Right. So how do we, how do we as a people, maybe all you two agree, how do we get together and say, enough's enough? Let's start over and reel back. 'Cause like your hands are twisted, your hands are tied, hey, we gotta do something about it.
I think, I think, you know, we've had this discussion too. It's gonna have to start at the state legislature level.
Right.
They're making the laws. We don't make laws. We're like you, we have to follow them.
But how do we get a big enough people, a group of people, to go down there and basically people stand up?
That's a great question. And it's frustrating because people are working, they're taking care of kids, they're doing all those things.
Exactly.
But it's how we're, but it's how we're set up to do it. I, I can't fix that by myself.
And I'm not saying, that's what the problem, you know, how do we as a group of people stand up and say, enough's enough? We're done paying.
I can tell you, for what it's worth, remember at our ditch authority meeting?
Yeah.
When I encouraged you guys to do that, I got a phone call the next morning from Representative Schultz asking me, what did I say to you guys? Because he was on his umpteenth phone call. So there was a response and he heard it.
Yep. And he was, he had it at Rice, at the old Creamery Cafe.
Yep, and just the other day, he was at Sable Inn for an update. So, he's hearing that.
Yeah.
But again, he's, even if he agrees a hundred percent with what you're saying, he's by himself. He has to have a majority.
And is it, 'cause I, I just find it hard to believe that we have to spend twenty-some million dollars to bring this building up to code. Is it that, what is that far off? I mean, if there's, there's gotta be something...
You gotta remember that, that comes with a, a new addition because we lose the whole bottom level.
Of the old courthouse.
Of the old courthouse.
What's, what are we losing, why are we losing it or?
Because it's not, it won't meet code down there.
What, what's it short over, or I guess?
No room for HVAC additions, I mean, low ceilings. It's wet all the time. I mean, those are just a few things.
Right.
That if we lose that floor, what do we do with those people?
Right.
So the answer was, they'd have to add on.
Right. But like you say, it's just gotta stop. I mean, you guys heard me before, we're up to a big tax bill.
Yep. But one hundred, we agree with you, one hundred percent. We're paying the same taxes you guys are. It's not like we get free taxes.
Right.
And, and if, and you look at the tax capacity that we have and what our taxes are, we don't, we're not setting, some people thought we set these tax, we don't set these rates. That comes from the state.
Right.
And, and the reason our taxes are going up is because if a house is valued at, well, let's just say somebody is valued at three hundred grand but somebody's got an extra hundred and fifty thousand, wants to pay that hundred and fifty thousand, all of our houses appreciate to that. Same thing with land. If, if people wanna go buy, buy a hundred acres of land for seven thousand dollars and then they get turned down and then all of a sudden turn around and buy it for nine thousand an acre, everybody's land value goes up and taxes go up. We don't control that, but then we get, we get it on this end that our taxes are so high but everybody keeps buying land for X amount an acre. Would you agree, Commissioner Pop? You're in the farming industry. I don't know if, I'm, I'm a city.
And it's, it's this double-edged sword because Nick, if you farm your property for fifty years and you wanna sell it, shouldn't you be able to get the highest value for that property? I think you should.
Yeah.
You should be able to sell it.
Or you should be able to sell or pass it on with...
Sure, but I'm, I'm talking about selling.
Yep.
So if you can get twelve grand an acre for it, I think you should get that. The problem is, that affects my acreage and his acreage and your acreage. Everybody's value rises because of those sales. That's how the law works.
The only, the only way we, we turn this back around is if your land is worth eight thousand an acre, but you're willing to take six thousand an acre. Would you do that?
Or you're, or Jared, go back to your...
I wouldn't do that. I mean...
Go back to your house.
Go back to your house.
Yeah.
If your house is worth four hundred thousand, I want you to sell it for two eighty.
Yeah, exactly. Why would you do that?
Right. Well, it's only worse when someone's willing to pay. I mean, that's...
That's, that's the problem with taxes.
Right, but...
Yeah.
Wait, if you wanna talk, please wait. Yeah. It, I, I, I'd love to figure that out with you. I don't have an answer for you.
Right. So I'm just, 'cause I, the majority of people here sitting don't agree in, I mean, for instance, like what, total different, the ditch, what they wanna tax on that and I'll tax this on top. It's like, well, when's it gonna stop?
I'll be honest, I wish this group would have been in Sauk Rapids for the school district deal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Look at our school district. It's ridiculous what they spent on that HVAC system over there. But that's not here and over there that we're talking about this now.
Yeah.
So, we gotta pay, it's just too much going out. We gotta reel back and say, sorry, but we're gonna have to hold off. And like I say, and it should have been, we got that letter in our taxes. That's why, that's all I fault about this. I guess I don't, every day go on the website to look, on the county website to see what's going on. I guess maybe we'll have to start doing that on a monthly basis just to see what's happening. But that letter, why weren't, why didn't we send one out when we first decided, maybe, hey, we're gonna try and move forward before we spent any money?
Well, I think we were tasked with what we were going to do. And again, those meetings are noticed, they're, the public's always invited and it's, it's tough if the public doesn't show up. I don't know how to force the public to come.
And we've talked about it at our board meetings too.
Absolutely.
Right. But it worked now when you sent the letter. I mean, a few people that never saw it till that letter came out. I mean, I think that, 'cause you obviously gotta pay your taxes or someone's knocking on your door.
That, that's where, we're trying to be transparent. There's been no decisions made. Zero.
Right. No, so...
And, and the money that we spent on the design can be reused down the road.
For future design.
Yes.
Future design. The one point, maybe some of that is gonna be wasted money if we don't move forward, but...
'Cause who'd we buy the land from?
It was the person that built the high school.
Everett Savania.
And believe you me...
Well, didn't we own that to begin with?
No.
No. High school, the school district owned it. They sold it to Gopher State Contractors, it was owned by Everett.
And we negotiated, I personally know Everett, and we negotiated with that to get that down to where it was. I mean, it was relatively a pretty cheap buy. I think if the county was willing to sell it...
They should be able to make up for it.
Yes.
We should make up for it. But there again, it was kind of the part of the long-term planning here is like, this is available, what do we wanna do? People will ask, well, why didn't you build it over there? Well, the same reason is, we needed some expansion over there someday. Some board is gonna expand the courts facilities and/or the jail. And if they don't have the land, they're gonna go out and buy it. So that's why we left that alone for future expansion over there for some board to take care of. Probably not this one.
Well, administration may have, no, we don't have to rebound, throw anybody into jail. Seems like they just let them out soon.
I hear you there. I hear you there.
Person's point about we only, he said twenty people. I think our average daily tenants last month was thirty-two. You're right. Judges aren't putting them in jail.
No.
Well, hell, they're leaving to the back door to get away.
Yeah.
I mean, like I said, we, we the people have to stop this.
Yeah. All right, we hear you.
And it's, why not, let's just pay off our debt, like you say, and just not spend no more, but throw it in the savings account for any day? That's one thing too I don't get. How, what is that deal if we allow so much money for this and so much for that and if you don't use it, you lose it or you can't use it for something else? Well, that seems totally backwards.
Yeah, that's... Okay, go ahead.
I, I was just gonna say to your comment of getting that letter into your taxes, that was also a decision made by this board to try to take, save the taxpayer monies because otherwise you're sending out forty, extra postage on forty, on forty-four thousand. So we decided to put it in with the taxes. People had to open it.
Yep.
They'll see it and we're not spending the extra money.
No, great idea. But you should have did that.
To your point about that, is, is because ninety-nine out of a hundred people getting their property tax statement are gonna open it, right? But if it's a separate letter for the county, it's a high chance it's garbage.
Yeah, exactly.
So that was the whole point behind it.
Right.
Yeah, we did.
They did it this time, but they're saying, you know, we hindsight, before we started is what everybody's getting at, but...
One, one point, Nick, to, to the Benton County taxes is that if you look, if you go back and you look at the levies that Benton County has done for the last ten years, we are one of the lowest in the state as far as average levy over a ten-year period. I mean, we are far less than our counterparts around here.
Well, it's stay less and not focus on what our state, as Mr. Walz, they keep going, instead of, let's maybe get above water and keep it above water.
You know, and if I can, I'd like to address Karen's comment about population. We're at plus or minus forty-two thousand. Benton County is the twenty-fifth largest county in the state of Minnesota. We're not large, but we certainly are not small. And remember, we have all of East Saint Cloud, we have all of Sauk Rapids, part of Sartell. So when you look at Benton County, we gotta be careful, we're not just looking at Foley.
Right.
We've got a tremendous amount of cost on the west end. That's just the way it is. That's where our county line is. And so, my point is, is that we're not as small as people maybe think we are. And we've grown seventy-three hundred people in the last ten years. So with growing people comes growing cost and, and additional staff to service those people. Because we continue to get mandated and a lot of unfunded mandates from the state of Minnesota.
Exactly. So who's mandating all this?
That's the state.
The state of Minnesota.
How about we get them people in here and tell them to open their...
And I'm here to tell you, it's no fun when unfunded...
Take this down there too.
That's what I said. We gotta, how do we do this though? 'Cause...
Well, look what they're talking about now, Nick. Governor's proposals... Well, look what they're talking about now Nick, Governor's proposals, even the House and Senate had proposals to cost shift to the counties, and how are we gonna pay for that Nick?
Exactly, so when we gonna stand up and say no?
We, our, we don't have money for that, we have to raise taxes, that's our way to pay for it.
Well, tell them to pay, like I said, then they should have taken out their wage and they would change their mind real quick, just like all this crap during COVID, Keith Ellison running around thinking, hey, I'm gonna shut you down, he should have give up his wage to pay that family's wage, I guarantee he went to shut anybody down.
My, my point is, they put us in a very tight predicament a lot of times.
That's why I said, how we, we gotta fight back though, we can't just keep, okay, fine, we'll do it, fine, we'll do it, wh- when we gonna say no, no, we're done, we're, just come back to.
There's a lot of people saying no right now.
A lot of, goodness, we have the federal government that we do, that's out cutting.
Yeah. Well, and I will tell you that people on this board, a, a, almost every one of them can tell you that they've been down to the state legislature, including myself, to, um, talk with the state legislatures to let them know what position we're in, to help fight for the things that we need to start cutting. But we're five people down there.
That's what I mean, we gotta get enough people together, cause like this, this, look at this erroneous, how many millions of dollars for illegal healthcare, but yet we're kicking the people to the curb that they say can't get in here to get their stuff. Well, we're kinda, I mean, contradicting, aren't we?
I think you need to run for office Nick, help get that changed.
I agree.
Well, you'd have my support.
Yep.
Mine too.
I don't get it, I guess, I don't know, but like I said, it's not, it's gonna take more than one person, it's gonna take everybody.
It is, it's gonna take way more than this five people sitting here.
Right, but let's start by cutting back and say, no, we don't agree with this.
We've, we've, uh, uh, we're, we're involved with AMC very, very heavily and the message has been, stop giving us more money, gi- give us less mandates.
Exactly.
The less mandates are gonna shrink government.
And the people gotta realize that, I guess, when they go vote unless it.
Yes, thank you.
You know, it's.
For state offices.
Everybody's gotta get out and vote, I guess.
Yes.
Okay.
But I'm here to, to make my vote and I vote no, so.
And I, and I, and on that note, I will say our local representatives are very good and they're on the same page as you guys.
Right, and thank goodness, I mean, and more of it's seems to be getting the right way.
Just remember, they need a majority to do it.
Exactly.
And the way the state is now, we're tied.
Supposedly, but how do we get these people, like I said, how we, how can we arrange, you guys should know, how do we arrange to get these people together and let's say, okay, everybody on this side go this side and everybody on that side go that side and let's compare. That's the only way to true colors, right, I mean, they keep saying all this stuff, but how do you know it's true?
Yeah.
Let's get out and see it.
Good question, yeah, good question, thanks.
Thanks guys.
Thank you.
Nick, anybody else in the audience that wishes to speak?
My name is Chad Pop and I'm in Graham Township, I do, uh, strongly oppose the current proposed government, government center. I don't honestly, I don't foresee that we need more space since COVID, we had people, more people working from home, we have shrinking government, we see it at the national level, it's happening at the state level, I think it has to happen at the local level too, I think it's gonna, it has already. So I just don't foresee, I don't foresee we need this space and as far as what you're proposing to do, I think you need to step back and look and say, okay, I need to deal with the old courthouse building, how many people are in there, can more people in there work from home? What do we really need, okay, maybe we look at doing this in, in different phases and okay, you do one phase for, phase one is for maybe ten million, but you don't do that right now, maybe you do that when your other debt's paid off. And you look at what you need at the current time and also as far as, I didn't mention as far as space, you know, in the future, we got AI coming, it's already here, it's gonna replace jobs. We, I don't think we're gonna need as many workers here, are we really gonna run around with them little stickers on our license plates in ten years? I mean, there's gotta be, there's gotta be technology, it's probably here already. I just, I, another thing too, so we've all heard our property taxes going up. Why don't you guys find the loophole and put it on our sales tax if you're gonna do any sort of re- renovation, spend any more money so we all can pay for it? You can go look at anybody's property taxes online, not everybody's paying property taxes, there's a lot of people exempt or getting them reduced, so put it on sales tax, we all can pay for it. Whether, whether it's doing part of it, I, I think you're going for the home run right now, I think it needs to be looked at fairly, further, what do we really need, when do we need it, what steps we need it to do it more fiscally, fiscally responsible, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Yes, I just wanna address Chad, Chad, I, I appreciate the comments, the, uh, the, I, I will say you're probably one of very few that say, keep them working from home, we've had a lot of people say, bring them back.
And if you do this building, then I hope you bring them back, but I, I'm not against people working from home, they, they have their place, okay? Yeah, and, and whatever, you know, certain, certain jobs. And that's a whole nother argument, it depends on the job and what they're doing, okay, I'm not promoting working from home, I'm not saying bring them all back, the state now is bringing them back half-time I hear, you know? Okay, so maybe bring ours half, back half-time, but I think it's a combination of working from home, you know, our technologies and AI coming. I, I don't, I don't really buy the fact that we need space, we need more room for growth, we got shrinking government, it has to shrink, it over expanded, it, it's gonna shrink, it's shrinking at, like I said, all levels.
And then as for the sales tax deal, we, we, we've ran that up the flagpole, we can't even get the sales tax for the product of, that, that goes in the building to be exempt, but that's being turned down right now. So we've been running avenues to get, like Stearns County, they, they, they're doing a big building, they got their tax, um, that'll be, that'll be put on the sales tax, but that was, that was because DOC made a lot of changes, they were able to get that run through the state government to, to allow that. To have a building like this, we just, they're not gonna do it.
And to further say, if the sales tax option, we would have to have state legislature approval for that.
So are you saying, I just want, for the records, in front of all these people, are you saying there's no way possible to ever put this on sales tax, it's, it's dead in the water, can't happen?
Unless we have state approval.
Exactly, Chad, very slim.
Okay, what do you need for state approval?
We need the state legislature.
Legislature to approve it.
Okay, so you're saying that's not possible?
We can't even get them to approve the five hundred thousand dollars worth of sales tax for the product on our building.
Exemption.
The exemption.
Yeah, so they just said, no, it's not gonna happen?
We're not in the bill.
They don't have an appetite for it, we can't get anybody to author it.
I just wanna make sure you, you've gone through all the revenue, or, or all the, you know?
That was talked about.
Checks and balances, that, okay, you're putting this on our property taxes, obviously nobody wants it under property taxes, so is there another way to pay for it through sales tax?
Yeah.
That's what, that's, you know, I wanna make sure you're.
I wish, I wish we could, we even tried putting on Sterns on their building.
We did, we asked the question.
They wouldn't accept it, but I mean, you look at their three hundred and thirty million dollar job and we're, we're twenty-seven, twenty, you know what I mean? It's peanuts to them, but they got theirs through because of some other avenues.
All of our taxes have gone up, they're gonna continue to go up. And I, I think you gotta look at it a different way, you know, I, I think if you're gonna get future support for this, you gotta look at phases, step back and say, okay, phase one, phase two, phase three. I'm not totally sure costs are gonna keep escalating the way they are, I think things are changing, companies are looking for work, labor's gonna kinda level off or go down, we don't know materials is gonna do, obviously tariffs, all that. I think things are gonna change, I don't, I don't think they're gonna keep escalating like crazy like they were, it's just my.
I probably agree with you Chad, on that.
I, I wish we'd have that crystal ball.
Yeah.
Nobody does, right?
Exactly, and, and when you speak about AI, got approximately a hundred and twenty people, I believe, that work in the human services department, AI ain't gonna take care of that, ain't gonna do nothing in that department alone.
Yeah.
AI is not gonna do nothing out in our pub, highway department, ain't gonna do nothing there either. You know, so, so when you talk about AI, you know, I, I agree with some of that, but the majority of it is not gonna work at the county level.
Okay.
Thank, thank you guys.
Thank you, thanks Chad. Anybody else that wishes to speak? Otherwise, anybody else?
I just wanna make a, a comment, when he mentioned about working from home and a lot of the people in human services had to when you had COVID, I have a daughter that's an RN, she's a case coordinator. And the majority, she's got a hundred and eighty-three patients, I believe, and the majority of the time she works from home in her office and twice a week, sometimes three times a week, she goes and sees her patients, otherwise she makes phone calls or whatever.
Okay.
And she's got a tiny little office in her house that she has to work from, home from, so like human services, a lot of them are, I said before, that are working from home and maybe some of these other jobs could be, um, done at home also. Um, you mentioned about, um, the handicap coming in and I told you all the surgeries, I've had thirty-eight and I've been in walkers and wheelchairs or whatever. Uh, the main, uh, places that a person has to go is right on your main floor, I mean, how many people go to the jail or how many, you can walk right into the, um, uh, the courthouses, you know, there's no going steps or anything like that. So, I mean, that's something a person has to look at, like Chad said, there's options, if people can work from home, get the same wages and they can do some of their paperwork and stuff at home, um, I think that's needs to get looked into more because you guys did it, uh, during COVID. Um, I had a, a court case, uh, during COVID and it was on a three-way call with a suspect that broke into my house, I didn't get to face him, I didn't get to see the attorneys, it was all done over the phone and he did it in, in one of the rooms there. So they accommodated the people during COVID during that time and maybe you have to take a good look at that and say, well, we did it then and we didn't really have a whole lot of problems, why can't we do, try something like that again to save money, so.
Okay, thank you, I seen somebody else wanted to get up and speak, all right, Terry.
Good evening Board, thank you for taking the time to listen to everybody here, everybody's got some strong concerns and as you do yourself. Um, I work here in Benton County, I live over by Gilman, so I live in Benton County either, so I know what the tax issue is about, I didn't get stuck with the ditch episode that some of the others did. Uh, those poor people are, are reeling from that, but I heard something tonight that kinda bothered me because, uh, you talked about if we're going to remodel this part of the building, instead of building a new one, do a remodel, that you're gonna build another building on here because of, uh, mold and stuff that's down here. We've got public health that's working down in the first floor, the reception area is on the first floor, they had, uh, a number of years, they had someone come in and inspect that and they said, there's no mold here, there's no problem, so.
Terry, if I could, I don't think we said mold, but I think the comment was that if we, if we remodeled to bring it up to code, we would be out of the first floor, those, whoever's down there would be out.
Yeah, it wasn't mold, it was code.
Code, not mold.
Okay, so what, what would be different that they're dealing with now compared to what you would do here in the, in a new addition?
Well, we would have, if we remove those employees from that floor, we'd have to have a space to put them.
Right, but why would you be moving out of there though?
If we remodel, code, code, not mold, code would require.
Would drive that.
Okay. Code would drive that.
Cause I've heard mold and we have seen mold.
Pete or Evan wanna answer that?
Yeah, Pete, any more comments on that?
They, they were not involved in that project, that was a Vetter Johnson site, I'm not sure we can ask Pete to come in on, on that particular issue, that was pre, pre-integrity.
Okay. The ceilings are too long.
Hmm, okay, okay, but yeah, I was just, like I said, I was concerned about the mold issue that we had seen earlier.
No mold.
No mold.
We've, we've had air quality sampling done and it's okay.
Yeah, okay.
That's it, thank you John.
Thank you, Terry.
Anybody else that wishes to talk? Okay.
So you said that the county is one point six million right now?
Yep.
Negative, cause we spent one point three million of our taxpayer dollars, that's what's part of that one point six, or we're just one point six?
One point six.
Okay, so, what can we do as a county, where can we take, borrow from this area to help out this area here at the courthouse? Who's, are you guys the five people that are in charge of the budget?
Yes.
All right, so how, how to do this without raising taxes, like he brought up, we should maybe, you know, tax our, whatever, do different things. What can we do that wouldn't propose us to have our taxes keep going up, I mean, what kind of system is it when you're doing your budget that we're not gonna get hammered again for the next ten years to pay for this?
I, I think the easy answer is, can we agree that all the taxpayers in the county pay for everything that happens here? So everything and anything we do, we all pay for.
Correct.
So whether we put it in, uh, raised levy amount for capital improvement plans, whether we go for bonding, however we finance it, it's all on all of our backs.
Okay, so when we know that the furnace is out twice, okay, we prioritize these things and do we go, okay, this is the first thing we need to fix?
So every year when it comes to budget time, property management in this case comes and presents what the plans are for the next five years, for example, we need to put carpet in this room, we need to paint those forty rooms, we need to replace the board, we've gotta do a roof, we've gotta do a generator. And so all those budget proposals come in front of us and we decide what we're going to do for those next five years, we do that every year. And those things can change based off potentially what happens, I mean, we're budgeting, so we're doing our best guess at what we see coming for the next year and those budget dollars are paid for all, by all of us.
So maybe we need to streamline more money into the courthouse for the renovations and not make it a, okay, one and done deal, we're gonna spend twenty-some thousand dollars and maybe we take a little bit from the roads or the other projects. Or for the.
See that, see that, that, okay.
Sorry, not the courthouse.
So, so you look at how old it is, that courthouse has been there for, the new one for how long?
Almost twenty-five years.
Almost twenty-five years.
I'm talking about the.
I know, but everybody still references this as the courthouse, that's how old, yeah.
So what I'm saying is, I think you're elected officials, we're trusting you with our money and you got ninety percent of the county screaming right now, let's not do this and let's get together and brainstorm, do whatever it takes. Not to spend the money that we have to be spending, like I feel like the one point three million was a waste because we need to use that money to streamline, to fix what we've got.
In, in all fairness, this isn't ninety percent of the county screaming, it's ninety percent of this room screaming. And, and in all fairness, the last meeting that we had here in Foley, there was what, four or five people out of the twenty people that were here that came up and, and told us they're all for it. But didn't wanna say anything because of what happened out in the audience and that audience, actually, one of the people that actually stood up and said something, got verbally attacked out by a vehicle.
I don't plan on verbally attacking anybody.
No, but, but that's what happened, but that's, but that's all, all honesty, what happened that night, and when we go to Rice, it wasn't at all like that.
No, no.
And we went to Sauk Rapids, it wasn't at all like that, so I don't know where.
It hasn't been like that tonight either though.
No, it hasn't, no, no, it hasn't been like that tonight either.
And, and you know, maybe we have to do the petition and then.
And honestly, that petition takes all of us off the hook because it stops the whole project.
Right, and but then the other, the problem will be is how to come up with the money to do the repairs to make this work.
Yep.
Without going overboard on spending another twenty thou, twenty million dollars to me, that's.
Yep, no, good points.
Sometimes when you guys were talking, my impression was, are we doing this for the people, are we doing this for the workers? Because it, it kinda, I felt both ways about that, like, why are we doing this, why are we putting this up? And to me, when you do all the bells and whistles, that sounds like you're doing it for the workers and not for the people.
And maybe, maybe Pete could speak to this, and Evan, are, is this building bells and whistles?
Absolutely not.
No, it, it's really not.
The new building.
I'm talking about.
No, the new, the new building is, is really not bells and whistles.
A drive-through, I mean, doesn't that seem like a lot of money that we're spending, I mean, couldn't we just dumb it down and say, this is what we got?
So if we took out the drive-through, would this group be okay?
No, I mean, I mean, I mean, there's a lot of things that could be taken out, but I don't think, is there an elevator?
Yes.
Okay, I mean, like if you just went through and said, okay, this is what we're gonna do, I feel like you're getting this maximum of money and you're gonna spend it all and is it necessary? Can you bring it down to our level of, hey, let's just do this instead of?
Just to bring our current elevator up to code is what, almost seventy grand? Just to bring our current elevator up to code is what, almost seventy grand?
So, why put a new elevator in an area, a new building?
Because it's cold, we.
Yeah, it's two stories.
Yeah. No, we're talking this building.
I'm talking about the new building.
Oh, the new building.
Have an elevator.
I don't think the footprint over there would allow us to have that big of a one-story building.
Plus would not allow no future growth.
Okay, so then with that being said, now you're talking future growth and we're talking about downsizing. Okay, that's, like, we are, we're not evening that out. And then we're not using the area over there for, for the new facility. So, you know, you bought a, a piece of property that's only going to be built up. Maybe you should have bought a piece of property where it was big enough to just have a one level and maybe save some money. I'm just saying, you know, you're spending our money, please look at it a little bit closer because to me, an elevator in this new building, that's unnecessary. And I, I feel like we're doing it a lot for the county workers, which I've said before, they do a good job. I've, I'm happy with them, but it should be for the, the people. Because it's our tax dollars along with yours, because you all pay taxes, but you're also getting paid a fee to be up there and doing your job too. So, I'm just saying, I, I think it's going to come back, we're going to get the numbers, take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Becky Lesniak, I work at Human Services, I've been there for seventeen years. Mainly down in the first floor, where you don't want us to be. I'd like to talk about Eastgate, why we still are renting a building over there for seven thousand dollars a month, why we couldn't have got out of the lease, or we could have got out of the lease, you renewed it. Why do we have to have Eastgate over there? Mostly it was supposed to be for the financials, so people could come and we could help them that live on the east side of Saint Cloud. But then they closed the doors and now it seems like there's just a handful of social service people over there.
We weren't, I wasn't on, I'll let somebody else answer to that, I wasn't on the board when we rented that.
So, when we first rented it, we got shut down by COVID. Okay, so we went into a lease and we couldn't use it for a year and a half. Okay, so then we decided we're going to open it up again. And then we put people over there, correct, Monty? We put.
No, we never really got people over there.
Well, right now, we have what, fourteen, fifteen people?
It varies from day to day, it's used for some folks as drop-in, I think maybe ten, twelve on a, a regular basis and then other folks come in on drop-in, they use the conference room and so on.
We have thirty people that work from home, that live out in that area, so they also use that facility every day too.
Right, but if you want to save money, I rent that building.
Then, then.
Whole big building.
Then we'd have to find a place for them here.
We do have room. I, I work in Human Services, we have empty offices.
Really? Thank you.
I work from home three-quarters of the time, I work in the office maybe one week per month. I've worked downstairs for seventeen years, haven't had cancer yet, thank goodness. It is bad. I will say that downstairs is bad. But I asked for a coat of paint, maybe a month or two ago, let's paint the lobby, let's make it look a little better. I was told you will not get a coat of paint to paint this lobby. Because I think deliberately you people wanted to make it look so bad for everybody to come in and see that you just ignored all the stuff to get fixed.
I've been on for four years, I didn't deliberately do this for forty-four and a hundred and twenty-five years. I've been on this board for four years.
Right.
I didn't deliberately do anything.
Right. Well, I think it, it, I think the things deliberately got not taken care of, is what I'm saying.
Well, that was my past project.
Because things could have been fixed up as it went. Now, our lobby could have been fixed up, right now it looks like crap, you know, it could have been fixed up. So, I think we could save seven thousand there with that Eastgate, plus the utilities we have to pay, the internet we have to pay.
Becky, just so we're clear, if the building gets built, Eastgate goes away. We're not going to continue Eastgate. So, just so we're clear about that.
I have a hard time believing that, but okay. Okay, so did you guys look at just building, the building for Human Services over there? Not this section over here, just for Human Services. How much would it cost for just a Human Service building? Because this is newer, this was remodeled not that long ago. You put the four big TVs up, which must have cost thousands of dollars, and what are they used for? The four big TVs that are sitting out there, what are they used for? What do, what do we use them? Why are they there? Does anybody know?
Which four are you talking about?
All the TVs that are above the DMV and the, wherever they are out there. Have to see them, they're as big as this. And what do we use them for?
They're for DMV.
For what, though?
For the tick, I don't know.
Chaos and stuff like that.
I mean, what, what do you want us to say?
That's a huge expense to buy those. It was a huge expense to remodel this section and now you want to bring everybody over there? When the main concern is Human Services. And that's the main concern that you should be looking at, is Human Services. Do you guys know how much it would cost? Have you looked at that, about just building for Human Services? Has that been discussed?
No, because we felt the priority was all departments, not just Human Services.
I don't think this section is a priority, you remodeled not that long ago. I mean, you put a lot of money into this area.
How long ago was that, Monty? Twenty-seven years ago? That was, yeah.
But it's still doable, I mean, I, I don't understand why you think you have to build a new one.
We do have to, we do have to address IT and land services. I mean, land services is just busting at the seams. And IT is a very big risk factor over there.
Well, and ultimately, like, like the board has said, if we start digging into this building to do remodeling, we have to bring everything up to code. That, that's not our choice, that has to be done, it has to be brought up to code.
But you're saying twenty-three million is worth adding on a new building over here?
That's the estimate.
That's the estimate. So, how much of that is for renovating this building? What part of that is for that and what part is for the building?
Rough number, Pete or Evan, rough number?
It was somewhere in that fourteen million, the remodel, I would say just off the cuff, obviously eight, nine, but same time too, you were recreating a parking lot to absorb the parking spaces you would displace with the addition in the back.
That person's thing with that parking lot, they want us to park over here and walk over to that building. Now, when it's twenty, thirty, forty below and you have to walk from there to there, that's awfully cold for one. And then I suggested where the drive-in DMV is, don't have that, make it a parking lot for the employees. You know, I was told there wasn't going to be enough space over there, have you really looked at it? Take off the DMV part of it?
Evan, can you answer that?
Has that been looked at? We don't have a lot of people that work here.
Evan, ballpark on the, on what, because this was brought up at other meetings, so ballpark on what that DMV drive-up, the cost of that DMV drive-up.
Thirty thousand maybe for that drive-up and that's probably with the service window, not including the asphalt.
So, a hundred thousand.
I don't know, I, I would vote against it, having a new building, and I work here. I mean, if we can't even get bulletproof glass or a security system like we've asked for for many years in Human Services, and we're always told, no, we're always shot down. So, if we can't even get that, I don't know how you think we can get a new building. That's just, that's just me personally, so thank you for listening, I appreciate the time.
All right, thank you. Anybody else?
Were you able to ask a question if we're attending virtually?
Sure, sure.
Yes, do it, do it.
Okay, can we take the virtual one first? All right, go ahead, state your name and your address.
Certainly, Jane Lateral, in the city of Foley, I'm also an employee of the county. I just have a couple of questions. What has been the discussion of what will happen with the old building if the new building is built?
Jane, I may be answered, this is Commissioner Johnson. A couple of different options and I, I really need to make sure that we all understand that these discussions are in the very preliminary stages because we haven't made a decision on the building yet. So, we can't finalize our plans for the future. Couple of different options, potentially federally qualified healthcare center, dental clinic for MA clients. Maybe we, again, I'm speaking hypothetically here, so I want, I want to make very clear about that. Maybe the property goes back on the tax rolls somehow. Maybe there's market rate apartments that go in here. Maybe it has a lower level floor or a ground floor level that would have a coffee shop, a food court type of thing, exercise area, I don't know, but there's all kinds of things that we could potentially do and maybe at the end of the day, the best answer is going to be to get it back on the tax rolls. But there've been very preliminary discussions about what some options are, but again, we haven't gotten real deep into the weeds because we haven't committed to a new building yet. Does that make sense? So, we, we can't agree to something until we know we're doing something else.
Certainly, I, I understand that, just something to keep in mind. If the county decides they're going to keep the building, there's going to be needing funding to maintain it.
Right, so.
In addition to the new building.
Right, so our intent, again, our intent is we would divest of this facility, we don't want to own it. And so, if another clinic, for example, comes in or if a thing gets raised and there's going to be a whole new building put here, we're not going to be involved in that, we're going to divest ourselves from this facility completely. We don't want to be paying for maintenance or anything to this building if we build new.
I see, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, somebody else was, go ahead.
Just like the past projects, how about we get like bids, hard numbers of exactly what it's going to be before we even?
Very good point, so let me walk through the calendar a little bit again. So, tonight we're having this public hearing. If the board chooses to make the decision to approve the funding mechanism, which is the bond, that's all you're doing is approving that that's our funding mechanism, that's how we could pay for it. May twenty-ninth, correct me if I'm wrong, Pete, May twenty-ninth is our established bid opening date. We will know that day what things are going to cost.
Don't you usually get the cost before you ask how much?
We've only gotten estimates and Pete, could you talk about that? The process that we have to go through to get to this point today, or Evan, if you wouldn't mind?
Pete, could we ask you to come to the mic, please?
Yeah, sorry. I don't mean to put you on the spot, but.
And Pete, can you introduce yourself for the folks here?
Pete Philippi, integrity group construction manager for the county. In order to get to this spot, you need a set of documents. And those documents were developed as the gentleman spoke earlier in the last year and a half, two years of these meetings to get to what we call construction documents with other plans and specifications. As of recent, they've been finished throughout this process and timeline. State statute dictates that we need to send those out for three published times in the legal newspaper of the county. We're currently through that process. And May twenty-ninth at 2:00 PM, we'll be opening bids publicly here. At that point, we'll go back and qualify the low response of bids per Minnesota state statute and present them to the county board later in June, so.
So, I'm sorry, go ahead, Pete.
Yeah, it's at that point, we'll actually have the hard numbers, basically in a competitive bid process, ready to present to the county.
With those hard documents, it lays out everything, HVAC, it lays everything out through the whole building. If we don't have hard documents, people are just going to give us estimates and if we go with their estimates and we go with what they're providing for an estimate, what happens is there's going to be tons of change orders. And that's when the buildings get very expensive. So, we got to go through this process to have everything laid out so that everybody is bidding the same, on the same products.
Absolutely, yes, and that's part of statute, it's part of competitive bidding and it's not based on estimates or assumptions because things change, markets change. I know people talked earlier in some of the public meetings, we're concerned about tariffs and things like that. Some of those things may or may not have an impact, we'll flush that all out on the twenty-ninth.
So, this dollar amount at twenty-nine million, seven hundred thousand was just an estimate that we received of what we think we can build a building for?
That is correct, it is our best guess of what that building's going to cost with current conditions.
Thank you.
Jared? Would, Miss, Pete, real quick, would you say that we took from the construction standpoint, the normal route?
Yes, every county and public agency that we've represented, we have not deviated. As a matter of fact, you have met more as a board on this project than most that I had in the last twenty-nine years of doing this.
And, and Pete, could I just confirm that too? Because, you know, again, I want to pound this transparency thing because we've tried really hard to do this. I know Mike Levanduski, I think, asked about if we had a building committee, we didn't do that. We had all five commissioners at every meeting.
Yes, very unusual, but it was very transparent, everything was held in public forums and I think it was well-vetted that way.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, he's probably outdone.
Basically, you took an average cost per square foot, I'm guessing, and is how you come up with this.
They actually got.
Yep, just the estimate.
Anybody else?
I have Michael Deppa, I have one more comment, that's to Ms. Benoit. You mentioned about the boiler system or whatever it is, if we had to renovate under American Disability Act, I don't believe you're correct on that. If they had to come to the front of the facility and say they had to make it handicap accessible to the front, I don't think you would have to take the rest of the building and make it ADA accessible. If you needed to put new doors in to make it handicap accessible for the American Disability Act for handicap people, I think the board and the people could do that. I don't think you would have to have everything else in the building up to code, period. If it's something that needs to be corrected, meaning if we don't have a handicap accessible bathroom for people, that doesn't mean we'd have to put the handicap accessible bathroom in. If we needed one, you could put that handicap accessible bathroom in for the public and pay for it. We would not have to make the rest of the facility handicap accessible or up to code, code or ADA.
I didn't say anything about ADA first.
Well, ADA. ADA stands for American Disability Act.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's, that's, that's code. Under, under the American Disability Act, you have to follow code. If we have, if we have something that's not up to code, it has to be up to code with the American Disability Act. We need to follow, those rules need to be followed, okay? Another thing is, is that was mentioned is about backing up the servers for if the computer room or whatever went, went down. That system should be backed up every day and those discs sent someplace out of the building if there was a fire. We talked about what if, the what ifs. We have insurance if, if, and if it burnt, we have insurance that it's going to get rebuilt. Am I correct or not on that? Insurance would cover the construction of that.
Yes, you're correct. Now, you can't take all that electronics in that room and move them off-site. So, you're going to lose that whole room and the ability to work from that room for probably two weeks, minimum.
Okay, I, I understand that, okay?
But that shuts the county down, you can't, I mean, you're not able, all your network resides there. You, you off-storage all of your, all of your backup. So, you can, you can bring that.
So, Jared, we don't have a backup to the backup?
Yes, you back it up to the cloud or you back it up to virtual servers. But you can, but you still need your hard network to bring it back in. Our IT director's right there too, if we want to ask a question. But that, you, we would, our county would be down for a period of time if that, if that was, if that room was taken out, without a doubt.
With the boiler system, I don't believe it should have got that far if it's going out twice a year with the preventive maintenance. There's preventive maintenance and I know you weren't involved on the, on the board or whatever, but there's money that's set aside to keep everything up to code and up, up to keep things running. We just don't run it in the ground and then all of a sudden say, hey, we need a new building. There's one other comment and I appreciate, I appreciate you guys taking the time to let the public hear is, is that you build a building and the building's probably used nine hours out of the day. I don't know, maybe ten, am I right?
Depends.
Depends.
Okay, depends. It's going to be used for those ten hours out of the day. It's not used on weekends, it's not used on holiday. It's not used on weekends, it's not used on holidays, and we're going to spend that kind of money? I don't see leaving a building empty and paying that kind of money. If we don't have the space for individuals for working or whatever, maybe we need to utilize our services better and change the hours. Not every, not everybody goes to work at 8:00 to 5:00 or 7:00 to 3:00. We need to utilize our manpower and our woman power and our people power to make things work. I think spending the type of money that we're, that's on the table now is not a good idea. I just believe that the money that you have put into the project is great, but like we mentioned, we stuck 1.3 million into doing the research on it. Mr. Kapinski said that we only have 1.6 million of debt. Let's kill the debt and make things work. They're working now, they're working now. And we're not putting a Band-Aid on it. This isn't a Band-Aid. I live in a 1930 house. I can't afford to go put up a new home and pay 9, 10, $12,000 on taxes just to have that. I don't think we just need to have this. We have to separate our needs from our wants. Is this something we need? I don't believe it's something we need. I believe that we need to do the right thing and maintain what we have. We can't put the burden on the taxpayers of Benton County because where is it going to end? It's got to end someplace. And I thank you people for your time. And I hope they utilize the time. Maybe some people need to work 3:00 to 11:00. Or maybe they need to work 9:00 to 6:00 or whatever those hours are. We have to extend our services. There's somebody that can change and come in and revamp and do schedules. Not everything runs on 7:00 to 3:00. So, I thank you people for your time.
All right, thanks, Mike.
Ms. Chair, you may recall, we had the remarks from Mr. Barley.
We'll get to that in the letters and that.
Would you like me to read that into the record?
We'll do a final call for anybody that wants to speak. Final call for anybody that wants to speak.
Hi, I'm Deborah Olson and I live-
Could you go to the mic a little closer?
And I live here in Foley. And granted, I don't like to spend extra money where it's not needed. I use, reuse and make do with what I have. But then, as I went through the tour in this building, and I'm sorry, there's things that do need to happen. Human services, yes. I don't know if any, anyone else has worked in healthcare in a larger metropolitan, but it's going to come here and we do not have what I call a panic button. So if something arises, my God, they are not going to get to those workers that are in those offices. If I worked in this building, I would hate to come to work every single day because of the lack of space and I, on top of my neighbors trying to get my own work done. And I've heard other employees mention that it gets awfully loud. They cannot think in order to get their own work done because of their coworkers being too loud. Now, if you're looking at this building and you're remodeling it, well, you're going to have to look at down the road almost the same amount of money to redo something else that you're going to find. I'm all in favor of the new building. I do not like the idea of paying more taxes. I should have been retired a long time ago. And yes, I continue to work so I can live, pay my bills. But I would like our county employees to work in a safe environment. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, last call for anybody else, otherwise we're going to close the public hearing.
I just have one question. When that Jane Lateral mentioned about the building and I asked you also what you were going to do with that building and you explained it to her. So, you would have to upgrade the codes.
Can you come to the mic again, please?
You had mentioned to Jane Lateral that you'd have to upgrade the codes and I had asked you that also, what you were going to do with the building. So, until you would sell it, you'd have, like that lady said, you'd have the new building and you'd have expenses for this building until you sold it. So the people that would buy, purchase it and took that, this building on, would have to pay for the coating upgrade, is that correct?
Correct, for whatever, for whatever they want to do.
So like, say they put a dental office in here or a health clinic, part of it or whatever.
Yep.
So that would have to be, put on your bill of sale of what, that they would have to stick into this building in order to make it a dental office.
No, we'd sell it as is.
As is.
So you don't do like-
If we had to sell it, we'd be better off if we had to sell it for a dollar.
Yep.
Realizing that they're going to have to spend some money in here, potentially. That's if the whole thing stays.
So you don't have to, like, like when you have a house and you're selling it as is or you're selling it to somebody and you're saying, well, this, you know, this is, we did this a year ago, you have to be upfront when you're selling your house and, you know, this is bad. And if you don't list that, say you have mold, black mold in your basement and you don't list it and you quick, put a coat of paint over, put a sheet rock over it or something and you sell this house and down the road, these people find out, hey, they never told us about this, that they sold this house to us and this stuff was bad. So that my question is to you, if you sold this and you have to let the new buyer know, even if it is as is, say, hey, this is what's bad in the building. We've got this wetness in the basement, we've got this and this and this. Are you, do you have to? I mean, I, I would think that would be some sort of a law that you have to, if you, homeowners have to do it, that you guys would have to say, you know, if you're going to buy this as is, it's a dental office and the reason we had to build a new building is because we needed the ductwork done, this and this and this and this. So do you have to be upfront with them too then?
Right, but some of that, ma'am, the, the building you're, you're talking about, that would have to be demoed and done with. We're talking more about this part, the latest part.
That's why I asked you earlier what you were going to do with the whole building.
Yeah, we got to demo the, the old one if we move forward with this.
Okay. And I just wanted to get back one more time. If the people go in the 30 days and they vote this down and like I said before, the lady said you can come back in 180 days and you can propose it to the people again. How many a times are you going to be allowed to do that if your constituents keep shooting you down over and over?
There won't be 180 days because I think we've got a pretty good agreement that it won't, nothing will happen. If you, if the reverse referendum happens, nothing's going to happen till the 2026 general election. And that's the only way, the, you know, that's when the people would get to say, and if they vote it down then, we're done, it's over.
Okay, so on this referendum reversal thing, you mentioned you have 30 days from tonight. That takes you into June.
Right.
But the gentleman over here said that you're getting proposals already for bids on the 29th of May. That's before you even got the constituents to sign off whether they want this or not. You're getting bids already.
That was the, the estimated time and what's his name can talk about that.
We are getting bids to actually see what a new facility would actually cost. We do not, at that point in time, have to make a decision yet and nor could we make a decision yet until after the 30 days are up.
Yes.
See what happens after that. And even after those 30 days, it'll be another two weeks because we got to get it ratified to make sure that everybody lived in the county.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Jim, one more time? Sure.
So you're proposing 29.7 or whatever, 30 million. What if it comes in at 35?
It's, it's done, done. Done. Because we're, we've only approved 29.7, right? That's the plan of the, tonight.
That's, that's our plan.
I mean, I did a lot of building and I was just wondering, you know, I bid a house and it comes in high. Are you going to revamp and try to rework and come back to a lower price?
No.
Type of building.
And, and correct me if I'm wrong, Peter, Evan, but there's what kind of contingencies put into the 29.7 estimate?
I'd like to know.
5%?
I'd have to go back and poll, but we had a 5% contingency built into the project, plus I think we had a 2% or 3% bid contingency, but I would need to go back and poll that estimate and verify exactly those numbers.
So again, Jim, because you've been involved in this, we're going to open the bids, right? And we're going to find that out. And so we've built contingencies into the design development. We've come up with a 29.7 million estimate. We're going to find out on the 29th what it really is.
So your hard number is 29.7?
That's if we approve the funding tonight, that's the hard number.
That's the hard number.
And that, and, and even if we approve the funding mechanism tonight, we can throw it down the toilet tomorrow.
Well, I understand that.
Yeah, okay, I just want to make sure, yeah.
You know, Commissioner Heinem's point is it will start that 30-day window.
I know.
The bids on the 29th and then once we're into June, we'll have the information and we'll have to make a decision. That's really kind of the drop dead date.
Yeah, well, that's, yeah, most of people, I think, are, a lot of people that didn't come tonight said, told me, because I talked to Ed and I knew different, but they told me it's a done deal, I'm not wasting money.
No.
You know, that's unfortunate. Census on the street.
That's unfortunate.
Yeah, it is.
And, and that, what's really unfortunate is you heard from, from Pete, from Contagility, we've been so transparent on this whole deal.
You know, but I, I can get a letter in the mail, it's Benton County Garbage Pickup Day tomorrow.
Yeah, I get that too, yeah.
You know.
Yep, yeah, I know.
A little waffling.
Okay, thanks, Jim.
It's already posted, right?
So what, what, what next meeting?
Well, so the next meeting would be, well, the, the public bid opening is the 29th.
So the bid, the bids are due to Contagility, I'm sorry, the Auditor's Office, May 29th by 2:00 PM. The board has scheduled the next meeting to consider the bids either to accept or reject for June 10th at 8:30 AM.
Yep, and if we get this reverse referendum back, we're going to have to delay that because we got to validate the reverse referendum.
Correct.
So, just because, just because we have it set, doesn't mean that we're voting that day. If this comes back with the, what is it, 1,147?
47 signatures, right.
Signatures, then we have to put everything on hold and get it validated.
Yep.
And that'll take approximately two more weeks.
Yes, least, I would say, yes. It's valid?
It's valid, it's done. Oh yeah, there's, this has never been done, this-
It'll be in the paper, yep.
He's the paper.
At this point-
Ms. Chair, do I have, Mr.- Ms. Chair, do I have the permission to read Mr. Barley's comments?
Well, I think she wants, make it quick, couldn't you Pam?
Okay.
Once, if, if they would get those 11, 1100 or whatever-
1,147.
How much will it cost us to get those validated?
I believe we have to do that in-house.
Yep.
It's in-house, so it's going to take a staff member's time.
Two weeks.
Two weeks' time to do it. So that's going to cost our, our county money also. The reason I'm up here is I'm, I'm not against having the new courts or the new government center. I know that there's money that we're going to have because we're going to have a better DMV that will be able to be more, they'll have more services. How much money will that possibly bring into our county?
We don't know. I think, I can address last year, Christine, if you're still here. If you can correct me if I'm wrong, '24, we brought in $280,000 in revenue in the DMV.
So then that could increase.
The intent is for that to increase because if we're going to have a DMV, we want full services.
Stock Rapids has a place where they rent out, just like-
Community room.
A community room. Will, will the community room here be able to be rented out?
Yes.
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 So that's another increase in-
Well-
Possible revenue. I mean, it, it may not be a lot, but it's still something.
And that, that's kind of why I said maybe to Mike's point is we don't know the hours because hopefully people are using that. Pam.
I see people there in Stock Rapids on Saturdays, on Sundays. I mean, I know people rent it all the time because I've been at multiple things.
The, the bit, that's a big pain in the butt, the community room in my area. Because they don't feel that they should be paying for a community room in Foley where they are never going to be able to use, they could use it if they want it, but why would they drive through to Foley? Well, Commissioner Pop, I, I guess my argument to that would be is the same-
And you know, we've been arguing about this.
The same phone call I got, I get a phone call from somebody who doesn't want to pay for the gravel on County Road 54 in Granite ledge because they never drive on it. Yeah. I, I get it, but I don't know how we dissect this to who's using what with 42,000.
I mean, I just-
We almost got by with ditch, without ditches.
Yeah. I didn't hear your comment, Nick, what was it?
We're not talking about-
I worked in the nursing home for 14 years. I look at these doors to go through. I've brought in residents to this building. It is not easy to bring residents in this building. Go to, through this door with a wheelchair, that won't happen. I mean, you couldn't turn into their restroom. There's, there is people that would have asked to come to the county board meetings that are handicapped accessible, or that this isn't handicapped accessible. So looking at that, that's not-
Okay.
There would be, there'd have to be finish, I mean, you know as well as I do that they couldn't get through those doors to go to the bathroom. So I'm just saying, like, there's, there's other things that need to be done in this building, not just-
Right.
The little things.
Okay, so we've had final call for that, so now we're going to close the public hearing. Is there any emails or letters? I know we have one letter that needs to be read into the record.
Yes, sir, may I, may I proceed? Thank you. So these are comments from Mr. Jake Barley. Jake was a former county commissioner and he's also county resident.
Your mic on, Monty?
My mic is on, my mic is on.
Swallow it.
You know, you know, okay. So here's what Mr. Barley says. He has a project proposal for a courthouse administrative building. I'm going to try and paraphrase this a little bit. He says, his objective is to address the need for updated facilities while minimizing the tax impact and maintaining accessibility for the community. And here's his proposed plan. His first step would be build a new administrative building, construct a state-of-art administrative facility across the road from the current courthouse. The building would accommodate all departments except human services, providing a modern and efficient workspace, reducing the strain on the old courthouse. Then he says, the next step is remodel the newest section, which would basically be the 1974 edition and this one here, the '81 edition, to exclusively house human services. That will optimize utilization of the existing structure and maintain a centralized location for this essential department. His next step is, says, maintain the east side of the East Gate facility, as you know. He says, partner with Stearns and Sherburne Counties to continue operating the east side East Gate facility. That will meet the demands of East St. Cloud residents and ensure accessible services across the region. And here's his expected benefits. It minimizes the tax burden by balancing new construction costs with remodeling expenses, enhance functionality and efficiency of administrative and human services operation, continued service coverage for all parts of the community, particularly the east side. And here's his next step. He says, engage with stakeholders, including county representatives and community members, to refine the proposal. Conduct feasibility studies for the new administrative building and courthouse remodeling. Develop a detailed budget and timeline for each phase of the project. And then finally, he concludes by saying, additionally, the phased process allows more time for assessing the evolving needs of the community and tailoring the project accordingly. By adopting this measured approach, Benton County can ensure that resources are allocated efficiently while accommodating unforeseen factors such as demographic shifts or changes in service demand. This strategy not only mitigates immediate financial risks, but also provides a foundation for sustainable development that aligns with long-term community goals.
And any other emails, comments that went before the county?
No, sir.
Okay. Was there any official actions affecting townships or cities?
No, sir.
The county board will now have time for questions of staff and discussion. As a reminder to the audience, the public hearing is now closed. Is there any questions from board members before we take any action? Whatever. Comments? Anybody want to comment?
Other than that, we need to do something. We, we truly need to do something. We've looked at a lot of options. People probably don't believe us. We've been transparent. And the one option was remodeling and adding, adding an addition over here to accommodate all of the services. And when we got a rough estimate of that at $23 million and then we looked at the rough estimate of $29 million, to me, that was an easy sell for a new facility. Instead of trying to remodel something that's been remodeled time and time again and you still gain no future-
and you still gain no future space. You're just remodeling the old space. I mean, they've done that numerous times in this facility and you've never gained any more space. You tried to make it more efficient, and at the end of the day, it still didn't work. So how long do we have to keep remodeling two or three old facilities? Just my point.
Mr. Chair? Yes. Um, we all struggle with this and, and we go back and forth. We, we, there's one day we're for it, one day we're against it. One day we're for it, one day we're against it. This isn't easy. We pay the same taxes you guys do, um, just different areas, wherever. But this is, this is one step in the process, and, and I, I'm gonna be honest, I'm gonna vote for the, the, the bonding, the CIP tonight because it's gonna allow us to get those numbers. It's gonna allow time for the reverse referendum to take place. And if the people speak, the people speak. It's off from my standpoint to 26, um, election. So, um, if we, if we vote this, this funding mechanism down tonight, we don't, everybody stops on the, on, on, on getting these numbers in. Who knows? Maybe they come in at 26 million, you know? Then, then you look at it and go, okay, maybe it makes a little bit of a difference out there. Maybe, maybe this, uh, reverse referendum comes in with, you know, 1,500 votes on it, or, or signatures on it. That automatically puts it away, you know? What happens if this referendum that everybody's talking about comes back with 300? Then we sit back and go, oh my, what did, what do we do? So there's a lot of what ifs. So I, I'm gonna vote to keep the process going, allow the timing for the reverse referendum, allow the numbers to come in so everybody can see what the actual numbers were on this facility and go from there. That doesn't mean I'm voting for the building to go forward. That means there's, there's more steps in the process and we all control the destiny here.
Mr. Chair, and I agree with Commissioner Gepinski, I will be voting for this too because this is just one part of the process to get to the finish line of either yes, we do it, or no, we don't do it. Cuz we don't have hard numbers.
Okay. Yeah, Ms. Chair, just a couple of quick comments. I just wanna make sure, and I wanna be very respectful of the reverse referendum. That's an option that the public has and that we will respect. Um, I, I think it behooves us to make sure everybody understands that if the reverse referendum goes through and stops the project and we get projected out to the November 26 ballot, and the 42,000 people, whoever registered in this county, 20,000, whatever that number is, if they approve this building, you're looking at an additional 2 to 3 million dollars. I, I just, we have to be clear about that because I would hate for you to come back to us, to your point earlier, and say, why didn't you build it when it was this? Now it's gonna cost us this. I'm not, again, you have the option to do the reverse referendum. That's your right. I respect it. And you should do it, if that's how you feel. But I just, I wanna be so crystal clear that if the countywide vote comes back in '26 approving this, we're spending more money. So I just, I wanna be clear about that.
Right. So my take on it's a little different. One is that, on the 10 years I've been on the county board, we struggled to make sure our taxes were low. Now we've got the school districts in both Foley and Stock Rapids putting huge levies on our deal. We have, uh, state cuts that are gonna mandate a lot of things that are gonna be pushed down to the counties. Federal government, as my nephew spoke, we don't know where that's going. We won't know for that probably till 2026. We have union negotiations with our employees this year, and then we have paid family leave. I don't know if I can stomach moving forward with this right now because of all the ti- the timing just really stinks. And I think that this county board should have the ability to look forward and tell the people that, you know, maybe we need to step back and look at where we're at and where we need to go before we push any further. I mean, granted, we spent 1.3 million bucks, and that's a lot of money that we've already spent, but that's not all wasted money because it'll always be there, whether it's '27, '28, or '29, whenever it goes forward. Some of that will still be in the plans. But I just have a hard time stomach, stomaching about where we were and where we're gonna go. I mean, this, this is an eight, seven, eight, six percent levy on your taxes if this moves forward. And I don't, I don't believe that today Benton County residents can handle that. But we're not voting on the building today, right? I just wanna make sure we're clear.
It sounds like we are.
It sounds like we are.
It always sounds like it, Commissioner Pop.
I'm making a point that I don't know if we should move forward from this point on.
Okay.
You don't even wanna see the numbers come in? I don't wanna see the numbers.
Oh, thank you.
Do, are we? I'll make my comments.
Please.
Um, this is a hell of a time to run for a new office and only be on here for three months, let me tell you. But I am so torn between this whole thing. Wasting money is not my thing at all. And so this is, this is a very hard decision for me. So at this point, it's not gonna cost us anymore to get those money, tho- those numbers to come back. I wanna see what those true numbers are and not go off an estimate. So we have at least some idea. We already spent $1 million on, on this project already. Why not see where those numbers are gonna come in at? Where those actual physical numbers are gonna come in at? So, um, at this point, I would vote just for the, not for the building, but for the CIP, just to go forward so we can see what those estimates are, or what those actual bids are coming in at.
Okay. Commissioner Pop, I think to your point, and I share your sentiment, I, I really do. I understand the timing part of it. It really does suck. And one of the hard things for us here is that we all have a very big fiduciary responsibility to these people and to the other 40,000 people in this county. And it's not just building potentially for tomorrow if we do this. This is a long-term thing. We're expecting our county to grow, which then we're expecting services probably to grow. I think we would be, we would be in error to think that services aren't gonna grow with an, an increasing population. I agree. It's a terrible time. It's frustrating to me that other entities, and, and I'm not involved in those entities, but we've got the Stock Rapids referendum, we've got the Foley HVAC levy, we've got our drainage assessments coming out of our, these poor landowners on the east end are taking a hammering. And yet at the same time, we're responsible to look long-term at the county's plans today. And I feel like our hands get tied because of all these outside pressures. And I understand these outside pressures. I'm empathetic to them. I really do get it. And to your point, my taxes are going up, so are yours, everybody's. And so that's the situation, and I, and I just say that from my heart because that's where we're at. It, it, to Commissioner Gepinski's point, I've, I've talked to him about this. You'd ask me yesterday, I might have said no. You'd ask me today, it might be yes. And tomorrow is, I don't know. So that's just honestly where we're at. I sit with the other four, or excuse me, three commissioners. I wanna see the numbers. We've come this far. There's really no additional cost. Let's find out what the numbers are, get into June, and make our decision.
Well, and if that reverse referendum comes in-
We won't have to worry about it.
It takes everything off the board.
Right.
It, it literally takes everything off the board.
Yes. Well, that, that's where I have a little bit more of a concern, is if that, the reverse referendum don't come up. I am not willing to put that burden on the taxpayers. I will not put the burden of what we got today and what we know on the taxpayers of Benton County. Cuz I've been there, seen that. But, but that's, that's assuming we're gonna vote yes for it when the numbers come in.
Yeah.
Are, are we?
We've never said.
We don't know about that. Yeah. Yeah, we don't know. I, I'm not.
So, so Ms. Chair, uh, the, the request of action before you tonight can be found on your agenda item as number two. Again, the number two on your agenda item. We've conducted your public hearing, and the next one is potential action on item number two on your agenda.
Correct.
Yes, sir.
So here's where we stood. We're looking for action on this.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution giving preliminary approval for the in suance of the county general obligation capital improvement plan bonds in the amount not to exceed 29,700,000, and adopt Benton County 2025, 2029 capital improvement plans as presented.
All second. Motion been made in second. Is there any other discussion?
Again, just for crystal clear clarification, this is a vote on the funding mechanism only. Not whether or not we're building.
Correct.
Correct. Just a funding mechanism, and we have not approved the building.
Okay. Would you do a roll call, Beth?
Commissioner Benoit?
Yes.
Commissioner Heinem?
Yes.
Commissioner Pop?
Nay.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Gepinski?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries on a 4-1 vote. And at that point, we are adjourned.
Let's see here.